Confirming that.
Yeah, that's fine. Comes in back.
Oh, great. That's good, okay.
And then, yeah.
All good, well.
Yes, you know, the hill ring.
It'll be a long night, so we don't get much.
Yeah, please. Okay. Yeah, that's good. I'll, um, yeah. I'll take a, yeah, I'll take a couple of hours.
You need to do it now?
No, you're okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting to order. First item on the agenda is public input period. If anyone wishes to address the committee the whole, please come forward, say your name, and you have two minutes worth of time. Thank you. Perfect. Next item is the addition of the agenda. Move by. Moore, second by Wallace, discussion on the agenda. Seeing none of their favor. Paul Scarry, unfinished business. The continuation of the committee the whole decision regarding the draft financial planning community support funding applications. So, not quite sure how rapid Louis you might want to...
I haven't compared anything in this in terms of you've been given all the information and it's just a case of how does that necessarily want to work with that?
Okay, so, there's, I guess, whatever council wants, but perhaps we could just go down item by item here? Is that all right? To discuss each one in a row? And I just want to say that we had a rather a long night, so I would like this to be done in time to have a bite and in time to have the regular meeting at seven o'clock, so... Okay, everybody good with that? So, moving down line by line. So, let's just start the discussion with page one, Roslin Museum. Anyone wish to make comments? This is committee the whole.
Are we using this chart at all, like from the manager or...
Yeah, I think we can, yeah, I don't think we have any fun.
Like, I'm not really sure where we're...
Do we have that, do we have that?
Prophetic.
Uh, the...
In the bind?
Yeah, do we have that? Yeah, I think it'd be easier. I have it by email, but... Forever.
Need for what to use?
See that big tree that came down there?
Lots of big trees, big windsurf.
More?
Yeah.
The big fir tree on, big fir tree on number between two and eight, right at the center, I thought, right? That was a surprising number, looked good.
Big cottonwoods down the creek bottom that...
Lucky we still have some bridges.
So, great. The other thing is some of the late requests or whatever aren't on here, so I just...
It's gonna be fun, I think we go through this list.
Well, and I wonder if you just go by this list, rather than through...
Sorry, I can do it, yeah, I can do it.
However you want.
Any way, any way you want. It's committee the whole, so we can...
I mean, it doesn't correspond to the way the package is, right? But the numbers at least are in front of us here with...
With the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, is everybody okay with going through the spreadsheet in that order? Because then we have those numbers right in front of us. You all right with that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, I think we're starting with, then we'd be starting with Chamber.
But there's something not on the spreadsheet.
Before you go, we just make sure that's how we want to do it.
Yeah, I have two things. One is I have a comment on the, on our discussion of capital that we had last time, and that's sort of unfinished business too. Could I just ask a question about that? Because we were doing that last time, but I had a question that I didn't ask. And then I also have a comment about the community group thing.
Okay, so I need to know, I think that's fine to the committee the whole, but I need to know whether you vote for this. Jody's just getting ready to leave if we're talking about the Chamber first.
Okay, well, my feeling about all the community groups is that actually Jody shouldn't really be involved in any of them. Well, because we're allocating, we're allocating funds and we have limited amount of funds that we're putting towards these groups. And if we give something to, you know, somebody, it might be money that we're not giving to the Chamber, and so she's got a vested interest in that.
I totally disagree with, no, I'm the chair, sorry. I totally disagree with that. I mean, the direct funding is to the Chamber, it isn't... If we provide X million dollars to X, that doesn't necessarily affect what we provide. We could give more money.
Yeah, we could, but we're not likely to, right?
I know that, but I mean, I don't think that that comment really is, is relevant. I think that...
Okay, well, I mean, it's her position to declare a conflict, but I just think we're handing out community funds and we have a bucket of community funds and her organization wants some of them.
There is, there is a bucket of funds, but that doesn't mean that it's finite.
Right, that's true.
So...
But we know that it's limited.
No, no, it doesn't mean that it's finite. So, to say that she has to leave if we're discussing any funds, I don't think is relevant. I mean, I'll, I'll leave it to the group and to Jody, but I seriously don't believe that to be the case.
Does anyone else have any comments on it?
Yeah.
I would say that's akin to saying that we can't discuss the budget because we get five thousand, six thousand dollars each from it.
I think that's about right.
I don't think that's the same at all.
We could decide to take sixteen thousand, or we could decide to take two thousand, right?
This is, uh, right, she's for, Jody's for.
Not really an appropriate conversation because it's up to the individual to declare their, their position in conflict. Um, so we're a little out of line here, but I agree with what I just heard the mayor say, which is we don't have a finite amount of money that is going towards these projects. And we're not saying, okay, we have two hundred fifty thousand and we're going to separate it along to these groups. It's not the way we're doing it. So, for that reason, I don't agree that that's necessary.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, once we decide on the Chamber, then that's done, right? So, then that amount is allocated and what comes after, we decide on, so... And, yeah, it's not like when we gave out the CBT funds, right?
No.
Where we're all, yeah, jockeying for those, those specific groups. So, I'd rather have Jody involved as part of council, to be honest.
Absolutely.
And to, yeah, so, once the Chamber's done, then I think that that will be set and she comes back into that, so I don't, I don't have problems.
All right, I just, it was a concern to me, so I thought I'd bring it up to the group. I accept the group's decision. Um, can I make my comment about capital before we get going? And one of the reports that we saw was the energy audit on the city facilities. And I think in, in all of the capital budgets that we looked at, I didn't see any of those energy audit savings incorporated into any of the capital projects that we were looking at doing. And I'm just, they may have been there, they may be in there in some way, and I just didn't recognize them, but I was hoping a question through to our director of public works about that, if any of those things are being contemplated for this year.
Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, they are, now that Tony, our electrician's back, I'm getting him to have a look at everything to see, you know, what is feasible and what's not feasible and what his recommendations are. So, I won't have anything probably in the next month.
Okay.
But we're seeing that with the arena, if council approves the fifty thousand dollars for capital upgrades that's in there, I will utilize some of that money.
Okay, I thought that was just a structural thing, not the energy efficiency thing.
No, it's, it's capital upgrade, so it, it's, I've been using it, no, definitely not structural. Structural, whole different, um...
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I just, I know at one point when we talked about the energy audit, there was gonna be a staff report that would come back to us that would sort of look at the ones that you thought were reasonable to do and prioritize those, so I'm still looking for that. Okay, perfect, thank you very much. That's it.
Okay.
One more question, or one more comment? Because this chart is not updated with some of the group's requests, right?
I know, I know.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna make that point earlier, so that when we go through it, we will have to refer to the actual application.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll refresh it, but this is just, what I thought was just a template. Okay, Jody, we're gonna start with the Chamber of Commerce. Okay, Chamber of Commerce's request, and if I get the numbers wrong, please correct me south, thank you very much, is, because it's, all of it, all of it isn't updated. It's thirty-nine, three-thirty. Yeah?
Forty-one, four.
Discussion on those numbers, forty-one, four. Or a recommendation? I think we should just do recommendations, because then we can get to discussion that then is...
Okay, before I make a recommendation, I have a question for, through to staff, is what is the amount that we collect in business licenses at this point? Is it like thirty thousand dollars?
I have to... Business licenses, in two thousand and thirteen, it was twenty-seven thousand plus the interministerial, which is five thousand five hundred.
So, thirty-two total?
So, thirty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation that we give the Chamber of Commerce half of the business license, or, I mean, sorry, one-third of the business license amount.
One-third of thirty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Eight thousand dollars. Second or to that?
One-third of thirty-two, that's more than...
I have reasons for it, so I've...
You need a second or...
Ten thousand. Well, second it to get on the floor.
Okay. My reasons for it is I looked back over the annual report that we got from the Chamber before, and I, I think we need to be a little more creative with the Chamber, the way it's, the way it's structured. Um, they did a survey of their membership and they had, right now they get fifty-four percent of their funding from the city. They did a, their own strategy report, surveyed their own members, and they had forty-seven percent say that the Chamber is somewhat relevant to their business. And to me, if the people who are supposed to be benefiting from this organization, only forty-seven percent of them think that it's even somewhat relevant to their business, I'm not sure that that's really the best place that we should be investing taxpayer money. There is a very active Chamber of Commerce and Trail, if what they, if what they're interested in is, you know, the discounts that they get on insurance and on credit card charges and telephone and those kinds of services that the Chamber offers, right? They could get that through the other Chamber, they don't need us for that. And then maybe the Chamber could be more focused on some of the other things, like the events that they put on to, you know, involve the community, that kind of thing. But I think that it's worthwhile to look at other ways. The fact that we've been giving them forty thousand or forty-one thousand or whatever for the last number of years doesn't, isn't an endorsement to me that we should continue doing it, particularly when their own report from their own members states that, you know, it's not, you know, it's not something that the members value all that much. They had in their report, in their strategy, they stated certain challenges, the economy. So, there's, we have our sustainability task force working on the economy, there is the LCIC working on the economy. Transportation, we've got Tourism Roslin's already working on that, as is LCIC with things more regionally. Taxes, they talk about taxes, and, you know, that's not something the Chamber's really gonna be able to help with, that's gonna be an improvement of, you know, of the economy, right? Broadband, we've already got a task force that does, works with that, I'm not sure the Chamber, you know, really offers that much. They also talk about promoting the tax revitalization bylaw, although they haven't actually done much with that, and that's a fairly small target audience that we ourselves, as a city, could promote that if we wanted to. You know, there are definitely things like having a year-round visitor information should be, should be dealt with, right? And we've talked about that with the museum. But, you know, I just, you know, we have tough decisions to make this year. We've already got a seven percent increase because of Palm Beach, Washington, and I just think we need to look at, at places where, you know, we have to make some, some hard choices. And I see that organization as one that we could.
Okay, I just, just the seven percent, that was a recommendation of council's, so just for people that are here, we haven't decided on that, but it's a recommendation.
Yes, right, 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 potential.
Potential.
Potential, yeah, absolutely, potential. So, open up to anyone else. I think the question I have is if the business community contributes thirty-two thousand to the City of Roslin, how does that, maybe, perhaps, that should, thirty-two should flow back to the Chamber? I'd be fine with that.
I do have another idea about the other two services.
Yes, you're gonna have a chance to speak once we get some other people. Go ahead, you second it.
Oh, I did, yes. Um, yeah, you know, I looked, I looked at the Chamber information and numbers as well, and, you know, I've always felt that, you know, it would have been nice to see the Chamber and Tourism Roslin somehow amalgamate more, and I know they have separate mandates, I understand all of that. But I also agree with council more that we do have to make some, perhaps some unsavory decisions around funding of groups. The one thing about Tourism Roslin that I also note is that the Winter Carnival, although it's...
Tourism Roslin?
No, sorry, Chamber of Commerce. That, you know, the Winter Carnival, which, you know, we've spent from nine to sixteen thousand in in-kind work for them, which is, keeps rising, that's also benefits the businesses. So, if you really look at that amount and you put it with what we supply the Chamber with, it's, it's a fair bit of money, because the Winter Carnival really is about, it's about people in Roslin, but it's also about the businesses in Roslin, right? So, it's another kind of economic driver and, and it's, you know, another ten thousand dollars, say, on average. So, you know, I'm, you know, I'm willing to support something where there's a lesser amount going to the Chamber, to be honest, and not, could I just, could someone help me with the number of actual members again?
There's a hundred and fifty-four in their, in their report, I think, but, yeah. Go back and see if I wrote that.
Derek, wanna just talk about...
Anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Counselor off.
Well, I completely agree, this is, this is going to be a very difficult discussion, the whole, the whole budget. And I really think that we need to put the focus of tax dollars back on to what are the essential and core services of what we're supposed to be doing. I know some of our services, of some of our regional services, we've got a, at least a fifty-six thousand dollar increase with sewer, we've got fire service going up, there's some pretty significant costs there, and those are essential services. And then we look at our asset management or our infrastructure deficit. That's, that's critical, that's where money should be going. So, this is definitely a difficult decision. And I, and I completely agree, I think that we need somehow to have more cooperative effort between Tourism Roslin and the, and the Chamber. It just seems like a natural fit that somehow we haven't reached. So, I don't know how to get there. But on the other hand, you know, the business licensing fees, I think if, if they're coming into the city, it makes sense that they go to the Chamber. So, I'm, I'm not in support of reducing their budget so drastically, that, that seems too much. So, that's where we're at.
Councilor Fisher, if you wanna...
Well, I suppose with a framework for this budget at the moment, we haven't got to a stage yet, I mean, we're looking at things on a case-by-case basis, and the framework for the overall budget hasn't been really set in terms of whether we look at a zero or a five, or a five increase, or a five decrease, or, we haven't really said anything like that. We said that we, we haven't said it. It hasn't been voted on, it's been in committee the whole, but it hasn't been set.
Yeah, you're right.
So, for me, going through all of these things and trying to look at efficiency without necessarily having that framework around it, we have a recommendation, a relative recommendation from the staff report. In this particular case with the Chamber, I, I think the argument is relatively reasonable coming from Counselor Moore, to the extent that the report is, kinda indicts itself. But I think that from a city's perspective, some of the comments, other comments that I hear about other things benefiting businesses, I think that this is really a symbiotic relationship, the businesses benefit the city, the people that live in the city benefit from having the businesses and vice versa. So, I don't really, I'm not really looking at it from that perspective. What I'd probably do is look for a decrease and then challenge the Chamber to sort of either recreate itself or validate itself, moving forward, going down the road. And I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure what that decrease should be, relatively speaking. You know, five to seven percent seems like if that's a, if everybody's gonna share the burden equally, then, then that's a framework that I might, might be able to support. I don't mind the idea of, but I lived in the States, and when we lived in the States, that's exactly how it was. The Chamber, the cities collected the money from taxes and gave it to the Chambers, and the Chambers were out trying to increase their membership so they could get more money. I mean, it was a direct, it was a direct relationship, rather than more, this is a little ambiguous, the way that we give the money. Anyway, that, those are just my general comments on, on that. I would, I definitely would be in support of a reduction, and then challenge the Chamber on, on, on what they do going forward.
Okay, thank you, and just for everybody's notes here, five percent of the forty-one, four is roughly eight grand, which we put it to thirty-two, is which they collect, is what number is they collect the case, so that's about five percent. Uh, I think it was there first.
Um, okay, so, I am certainly in support of local business. I think I'm in, in support of local business in a way that is the most effective. And when I look, I, I agree, Tourism Roslin and the Chamber, it would be great if they worked better and had better synergy between the two of them, and for whatever reason, they do or they don't, whatever. But when I look at those two organizations, I see the one that delivers is Tourism Roslin, rather than the Chamber, in terms of, you know, getting people here, getting, you know, and when people are here, that benefits all of our businesses, right? So, my idea on this was one-third to the Chamber, two-thirds to Tourism Roslin, which is a huge cut for both of those groups, but, from what they want, from what they've had in the past, but trying to look at going forward, getting things that actually work. Like, last year I had suggested when we looked at groups that we did kind of what, what you're suggesting this time, a percentage decrease and then get them to, you know, go forward, but that's not what council chose to do. We gave some more, we completely scrapped others, you know, we didn't really do it in a way that made logical sense to me, but it makes sense to council, right? So, fine. But, so I think we've kinda, we keep coming up against these same decisions every year, and at some point, we've got to say, you know, take a stand on something and say, this hasn't really been that effective at generating strength, business strength in the community as an organization. There's been plenty of years for them to justify themselves, and, you know, I just don't, I just don't see it happening. So, that's why I'm thinking, and I realize this is a drastic suggestion, but, you know...
Yeah, I mean, you know, and as far as, you know, core services, I'm almost starting to dislike that expression. I do dislike that expression, because, you know, pipes and roads, yes, but, you know, the social fabric of a community is these kinds of services that we're talking about today. Every community has pipes and roads, and we've talked about that. So, yes, core service is important, and, you know, when you talk about the regional district, you know, where, are they having these hard discussions like we're having? I sure hope so, because they're, you know, the cost to the regional district keep escalating, and it always lands back in our lap at this level, that we have to cut the things that are most meaningful in the community, which are these groups. And as far as a percentage goes, I don't agree with that, because, for example, the Sustainability Commission, we know that we annihilated that group by taking all of their funding away. So, to talk about that group, that's my word, that, to talk about, you know, a percentage with these groups, that's not fair at all at this point, because we've already decreased significantly in some areas. So, I think, you know, again, we have, you know, we're going through every group, we're gonna have this conversation. I agree, maybe, maybe we're premature on this, because maybe we need the framework, the financial framework, and where we're gonna reduce or increase, and there's other things in the, in the financial plan that we haven't even talked about. Like, I've looked at other pages that I go, you know, there's other areas in public works, we haven't talked about parks, we generally talked about it, but we haven't made any decisions about that. So, you know, it's, the, the process right now is, I think is what's bothering me. You know, we all look at the numbers, and we're just gonna go down this list, you know, I actually don't feel comfortable with that. I think all of these groups are worthy of themselves. Yes, some more than others, and some benefit, you know, some community members more than others, and, yeah, I mean, for, you know, the five of us to sit here and say we're gonna, you know, decrease by this much or that much, I mean, there has to be reasons, and there really should be significant criteria. So, yes, we can do this and make those recommendations, but, you know, I just, I, 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 you know, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I just think we need a better process, to be honest, so, I mean, we're gonna go for it, but...
As, as to the process, I mean, we've been through the initial, and we've said by recommendation to shoot for seven percent. So, now, to shoot for seven percent, we also need to take these into account to get there. And once we make these recommendations to council, then council will have a look at it, and we'll see if we're seven percent, or eight percent, or two percent, or whatever. And don't forget, we can simply by motion say that we want to increase taxes to cover these things. I mean, you know, it's, it's up to us.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And the process, I don't, I appreciate your concerns about the process, but I don't think the process is flawed. I think these are, this is like three hundred and seventy-something thousand dollars that, that we use to support community groups, and we all understand, we have terrific volunteers, we have terrific community groups, but at the end of the day, thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars is ten percent taxes. So, this is an area that we could reduce if we were, if we wish to decrease that number, simple. If we don't want to, we don't have to.
Yeah, no...
But we have to discuss it, right? And that's why we're doing it.
Yes, and that's why we're having committee the whole.
That's it.
You know, but we are ready, you know, from twenty-eleven to twenty-thirteen, we did reduce our contributions to those groups by a hundred and, over a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
So, we've already, we've gone at it, and we're, you know, we're trying.
Right.
At the same time, we're trying to keep those groups buoyant somehow.
But it's up to council to make that decision, and that's why we're having...
Yeah, but I, you know, I don't, I don't wanna get into a, you know, bickering about, you know, people's preferences, like at this table, we have to think about who we represent, not about what, you know...
I totally agree.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's ways that we can save money, that's what we're here for, and we can, you know, I, we all recognize the, the reason that a lot of people came to Roslin is the services we provide. And these are part of it, and we all understand that. Okay, I...
I was just going to reiterate what Counselor Spearon said, because I had that same thing in my notes, and I'm concerned that we spend, have a whole night set aside, a whole COW set aside, to how we can allocate the community, the community group money, but we don't have a whole night set aside of how we can look at cost savings in other parts of our operations. And that does, I think that's the point, one of the points that Counselor Spearon was getting at, and that bothers me also, because I think there are other places and, and other savings that could be had, we just haven't had the fulsome discussion to, to pine about, right? To have that conversation with that.
So, are you saying that the process is over once we do this?
No, I'm not saying it is, but I don't see that we, we, we've never done it that way, we've never really sat down and looked hard and fast at those other things.
Give us an example.
Well, like parks, for example. We've never sat down and say, okay, what would be the impact if we closed one of the parks? What's the financial savings, what's the cost to the community, how many users would be upset, what, you know, we've never, we've never done that.
But we did go through those just about line by line, and after going through line by line, we said, we, council said, our recommendation is that we shoot for seven percent, let's see what it looks like, and that's what we're doing right now.
Yes, but what we went through on the capital issues, with, we looked at the capital list that Mr. Albo would provided us, which is great, with the prioritized things, right? We looked at that. We didn't look at what if we closed a park, we didn't look at that. I mean, I guess we did look at what if we closed a swimming pool, but we didn't, because we didn't look at who would be impacted by that. We just looked at the things that were presented to us as priorities for this year and decided, yeah, we wanted to keep it to seven hundred thousand dollars. That's kind of a, that's, that's not quite the discussion that I think Counselor Spearon and I are both talking about here, where we look at some of these other things.
Sorry, I have to interject so that we can get into the, if you want more discussion on, on that, then just make a motion. I mean, we've been through just about line by line on the operations budget, we have, and on the capital budget, we've been through just about every project, and everyone at this table had the opportunity to put their two cents in with capital projects, with operations, we've, we've all done that. If we didn't have enough discussion or whatever, as, you know, as you wish to have, then fine, make a motion, we'll, we'll go back and discuss it some more. It isn't, you know, it's, it's a thing in progress here. If, if we can't make seven with what we do here and what we did there, then we have to do some more. I mean, I respectfully disagree that we haven't had discussions about capital and operating budgets.
Well, we have, but we haven't, right? I mean, we've had, we've, we've had the opportunity, but, you know, it, it, you know, has, for example, I'll pick on Darren, you know, has Darren come and said, okay, if we close Centennial Park or if we close Cook Avenue Park or if we stop watering all the parks, um, what kind of savings are we gonna have? Because, you know, I mean, there's, I mean, he goes through all these umpteen pages we have, which is wonderful. Um, you know, I was, I don't know what page it was, but anyway, I was looking at one of the pages on Public Works and, sorry, I don't know where I put the pages.
Right, right.
I mean, we gotta keep going right now, but I, okay, so for example, snow plowing, sanding and snow removal, right? Um, you know, I just, you know, was throwing around numbers and, you know, twelve percent of something, you know, I've got numbers here, right? That, you know, so if we said to Darren, I know Darren's always justified the snow plowing numbers and he showed us the charts and all of that, right? Um, but, you know, if, ha, okay, this is my question, has pu, has Public Works, has Darren's department or Darren, being the manager, gone through and found all the efficiencies are absolutely possible, right? That could be presented to council.
He told us that. We've gone through, we've gone, we've gone...
But what about the park thing? Because, you know, I always keep coming back to that.
I know, but we've gone, uh, two percent increases since oh-nine.
Yeah.
So those, those have been looked at very, very hard. We haven't cut services and no one, I, that, I think, if you wanna discuss, I don't know, I remember a council saying we're gonna only plow snow every second snowfall or something. If you wanna look at stuff like that, we can do that.
Well, that's an example that...
Well, it was an example.
Yeah.
I mean, we've asked Darren to, for, for years now, sorry, Mr. Albo, for years now, to come in at zeros with, when fuel prices have gone, I don't know, they're up sixty percent, uh, labor prices are up, I can't remember the percentages, all that stuff's up and we've managed to, to do zero. So the only thing left, the only thing that may be left at Public Works is to cut services.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we made the decision to, to do a budget at seven percent, see what seven percent looks like. That's why we're here now, going through these, to see if we can get within that seven percent. I, if we can't, then we look at something else and cut services.
So I wouldn't mind interjecting something here. So unfortunately, we can, to some degree statistically, we think, we compare ourselves to two thousand and nine and we boastfully say that we haven't increased taxes over a number of years and really what happened was is that ten years ago, the cities, operating budget, um, their taxes collected is somewhere around two million dollars or two point one million or something. Then there was a surge in tax assessments and people had to pay more in taxes here. There wasn't really a, no, there, there was a, there wasn't an increase, but it was a nominally increase because of the tax assessment values. So the amount now collected is about four million dollars and change. It was some, it was excess of that a couple of years ago when assessments were a bit higher. So relatively speaking, the, the not increasing taxes has been offset by the increases that had been enjoyed before and the budget to kinda rose up to that. If you look at a chart, I can show you a chart that shows taxes going up and an operating budget following it all the way up. And so even seeing comments like we, we are giving community groups less money than we did and, and while that nominally is correct, I think from two thousand and nine till now, um, the amount of money that was collected, if we would, if we were giving out four hundred and fifty thousand dollars way back when we were only collecting two million, we'd be giving out more than twenty percent of our budget to community groups relative. So I'm just putting everything in sort of perspective of where we've come from and where we are today. Um, and so while this doesn't make the challenge of getting to that number any easier, and I would suggest that, um, that somebody make a motion and to review, um, have a committee of the whole meeting to review the things that they wanna review and, uh, we'll go hammer it. Let's get on it. You wanna do that?
In the meantime...
Let's do this in the meantime.
Exactly.
And I would suggest that...
I just wanna, I, I, Tracy, I wanted to add something.
George, I, I just wanna point out my concern is that we're having some general discussion with that, like council or committee and perhaps...
Yes, I get that. So anyway, you wanna stay on point with, uh...
That's pretty much what I was going to say. I think she could contribute to the general conversation that we're having.
Exactly, great, I think alike. So we have a recommendation to cut by more and seconded by Spearon to cut Chamber, right? That was the, yeah?
To give them one-third of the business license amount, should be about, yeah.
Which would be a cut to eight thousand something dollars?
Thirty-two, I'm sure, thirty...
We need to know the number.
Thirty-two thousand, a third of thirty, ten thousand, ten, ten thousand, ten...
Ten thousand five or something.
Okay, well, I need to know what the number. Thank you much. So that, that's the recommendation you got now?
Ten thousand, yeah.
Ten thousand six sixty-six? And that's, that's the amount we're gonna fund, right? Councilmore, that's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation.
Okay, on that recommendation, all in favor? Posed. Motion's defeated. Another motion on, yes, please.
I would make a motion for the Roseland Chamber of Commerce to be funded with the amount of business licenses that the city receives, so, um, whatever that is.
I think it's thirty-two and change.
So it would, it would have to be, uh, I guess I better get a second or two or one.
Yeah, but, uh, just a sec, is this clarity to the...
George, we do need to, um, have something just to say licenses, are you saying the twenty-fourteen amount we're going to cut?
That's where we can go, whether it works retroactively, so, um, in twenty-fourteen, they would be funded by whatever was received in twenty-thirteen.
In twenty-thirteen.
Right?
Makes sense, seconded or not? Seconded by Fisher, discussion?
To me, um, you know, there were comments about, um, kind of personal perspective. This one is a pretty straight across factual and as Councilor Fisher mentioned, it gives incentive for the Chamber members and, and managers to get out there and increase their membership, um, and do what their membership needs. So, um, to me, it makes, it makes a great deal of sense to run it that way.
Yeah, and I personally like it myself. Uh, any other comments? Yeah?
Do you second it?
No, of course.
Um, well, um, if you're tying, you're tying the Chamber's funding to, uh, licenses put into the city for business licenses, I think, I, to me, it makes more sense to tie it to Tourism Roseland or have Tourism Roseland share in that because they increase, uh, business in the city probably more than the Chamber does as far as, as far as I can tell on, when you see what they do versus what the Chamber does in terms of generating, um, visitors and revenue and whatnot. So I'd be voting against this just because I think, I think we're, I think we're being timid, right? I think we're being timid. I think we need to look at a new way to support the business community and, you know, I, I don't think doing things the way we've always done it with the Chamber is really very creative, so I'll be voting against it.
I appreciate your word timid, I think maybe some other words that could be used around the table is fair.
Your opinion.
Absolutely. Oh, sorry, I had something to say, no?
Again, I'm just kinda feeling like, I mean, sure that you can justify that. So have the business licenses always flown, uh, through to the Chamber? Is that what that's been used for? No, so where's that connection? I guess I just don't understand that connection.
I think that is the connection, isn't it? The Chamber is funded by itself, basically.
Right. But every business in Roseland, that's legitimate, has to have a business license, correct? So, but that doesn't mean that they're connected to the Chamber in any way, so...
They don't have to be a Chamber member.
No, they don't have to be a Chamber member.
They don't have to be a member of Tourism Roseland either.
They have to have a business license in order to be a member though.
Right.
That's the connection.
Okay, the recommendation, anything further?
Oh, I guess I, I mean, relatively speaking, um, in terms of growth in this area, if you just look at the solid numbers, I mean, there hasn't been really any significant growth, um, business-wise in this area, um, for the last few years. There was some significant growth several years ago, but relative to the coffers of, 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 uh, the businesses that we have in town, what they make, um, and taxes that go back to the provincial and federal government through HST and things like that for the sales of goods. Um, so I would say that, uh, these, all these groups are doing as much as they possibly can in light of, you know, the struggles that the general economy has, so I don't think any comments regarding one group doing better than others are necessarily valid in my mind if I really look at it from analytically speaking, at this point, just 'cause of where we're at. Anyway, that's all, move forward with that.
Okay, on this recommendation, all in favor? Posed. Recommendation's carried. Arts and Culture, uh...
George, come in back.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I need a two seconds.
Okay. Hold on, let me figure it out. Didn't wanna interrupt your dinner.
Can anyone give me the page of the package that the Arts and Culture, like...
Page one forty-three.
Of one ninety-six?
One forty-four or one ninety-six? I left the wait...
Uh, no, you know, I, you have to, I don't have, I don't have any of this.
Why, it doesn't work?
My system's, well, just... So is it one, what? One, oh, it's not in there? Oh, where was it? It was, oh, just...
Okay, we're back at it. Our next one up is, uh, Roseland Council for Arts and Cultures requests for four thousand is a recommendation, yes?
I'd make a recommendation that we give them the four thousand and that we give them a three-year annual agreement.
Second.
Okay, I just, I, yeah, I just, I mean, no, you second it, that's great. I just wanted to speak to that. I think the three-year agreement may be something that might, may wanna be outside of this motion because, uh, I don't know if this council wishes to provide agreements that will go into the next council. I, you know, it's, it's up to, it's up to council, but I think, you know, the next council is gonna be tied with similar discussions, so if you wanna keep that in, go ahead, that's fine, but I think if you wanted to make that separate, maybe we could do that, but if you wanna...
Well, it's, well, I'll, I'll start with it and I'll give my reasons why and then if it fails, we can go back to it.
So you wanna give your reasons why?
Yeah, I'll give my reasons why. Um, one, I think this group does excellent work, they leverage the funds really, really well. Um, they need a little stability because they're always going out well in advance trying to line up other funding from cultural groups and this and that and I think if they knew they had the three years, um, it would be all right. Council's a continuing body, uh, we make agreements all the time that, that enter into the future, we're not tying them up forever, right? And it's a very small amount of money in, in the big picture, so I don't, I don't see that as a, as a real big problem. Um, and I'd just like to give them, I, it would still require all the, the annual report and all the rest of it, right? We wouldn't, that, that would still be necessary, but, okay, that's really it.
Yeah, I just think that with our, with our new forms and all that, we might be, you know, doing an end run around the, the things we've put in place for the groups by saying three years. That's what I'm saying.
Right, and that's why I would say that, I would only recommend that for the very small groups, the ones that are really small amounts of money.
Well, I mean, some groups think their amounts are, lots of groups think their, their amounts are small.
Well, I'm thinking maybe the ones that council could consider small.
My point is, my point is... My point is that we've come together with the, with the new forms and all that stuff and if we were to guarantee three years without that being a requirement, then we've sort of gone against what we've already said.
Well, one, one thing on that, we never said that we wouldn't do three-year agreements in our new forms, we haven't said that.
No, 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 but this, but Councilor, this, this is a new process that we, we embarked on, correct? So I think perhaps we might wanna let the process take effect. Councilor, do your second.
Oh, I just, I'm, I'm in support of, of that amount of money because they do amazing, uh, leverage with it and work, well, like all groups, but they work extremely hard and it benefits the, the young and old really with the activity that they provide, so whether people decide to participate, that's their own private business, but certainly I'm in favor of it.
Now, you're okay with a three-year?
Yeah, unless there's a, I mean, I don't see, I, I mean, there's gonna be a time where, so you're suggesting it, it waits until the next council gets elected before they...
Because we have this, you have this new, new stuff in place, that's what I'm saying. And we'd be going around it, anyway, Councilor, I'll just get to the recommendations or discussion.
Um, I'm in support of the four thousand. Um, the RCAC is, has maintained almost that same level, it was thirty-five hundred and nine, I think. But, uh, as far as the, the three-year commitment, um, at this point, no, I don't think it's appropriate. There's a new council coming in in the fall and, um, so I, I can't support that piece of it, but I can certainly support the four thousand for RCAC. They leverage it hugely, they take care of one of our, um, city assets, they've done great work at the Miners Hall, um, so...
Councilor Fisher, did you wanna speak? Well, that Councilor, let me go if you're...
No, I, you know, relatively speaking, because of the size of it, I, I kinda, I don't really disagree with, uh, a three-year commitment, only insofar as, um, this particular group has, um, a lot of, a, a very strong volunteer base, um, and have gone out and leveraged a whole bunch of things. And we're also looking at, um, uh, some of the work that they're looking at doing to the Miners Hall, which is going for, which is something that is gonna take a number of years, I'm sure, um, whether they get that funding or not. If they have some stability and a small amount of money that we're talking about, um, might be a bit of an endorsement to that group to go out and, I mean, it certainly helps the city a lot, um, if they can go out and raise additional money to get upgrades done to the Miners Hall, like they've already done, basically, if you know what I mean? So, you know, I don't, uh, and I don't disagree with you on that, but I think we could define small right now. Small is less than five thousand dollars.
Okay, Councilor, your...
Um, I'm okay with the four thousand, but not with the three years for much same reasons we've already heard about, you know, new council and new system we're trying to implement, but also with the renovations, it could bring about, you know, new structure of how they work, but also what money, I mean, they need, may need more funds to run something else that comes along with the, the new structure or it just, it may change their, why they need to, you know, their, their how and their why and their, uh, everything. So I just think that we should leave the three-year bit out of it and, um, the four thousand for one year.
Agreements can always be changed if they come back with additional needs because of something, some project they've got. I think this, as Councilor Fisher said, this gives them stability to go forward, to show there's a commitment of the city. I mean, I think it's, it's really, um, kind of skirting around the intention of our, of our effort to, uh, kind of organize how we're dealing with community groups to, to say, oh, well, now we're only gonna do one year because now a new council coming in for four thousand dollars. It's, I mean, it seems, it seems, uh, it seems like we're missing the, you know, what is it, the forest for the trees or something.
No, but Councilor, perhaps I was, I didn't make myself clear, I, I don't think that we're doing an end run around anything. I think the four thousand is fine, I don't have a problem. Tourism Roseland, the Arts and Culture is very important to the city, I have no problem with that. We as a council sat down, put together a form, so that everybody has to come and, and live by that.
Yep, absolutely.
So if now we say, okay, to another great group, you don't have to come next year, but everybody else does, I don't think it's right.
Well, we never said we wouldn't do multi-year agreements.
I understand that and we can do that, we can do that, we can do that when we, they come to the new process, that's when we would do that. Right? I, I just think that you started a process and now we're just, I'll go on through with it, but anyway, you have the recommendation, does anybody else wanna speak to it, which is four grand and a three-year? All right, on that recommendation, all in favor? Posed. Motion's defeated.
I'll make a recommendation that we give them four thousand dollars for one year.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? Posed, carried. Columbia Trail Society are asking now for, it was nineteen in our sheet, but I think it went up, they wanted a cost of living increase.
Twenty-one, twenty-five?
Twenty-five or twenty-one-five, something like that.
I thought twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-one-five. Recommendations on that?
I'll make a recommendation that we give four thousand.
I hope this doesn't make too much clue. I'll make a recommendation that we give them the twenty-one-five and then begin. Twenty-five, I'll make that recommendation at twenty-five, except that, that the, that they, that they would be responsible for all trails within the city of Roslin.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. Do you need any clarification on that, or are you, to speak further on it, or what?
I don't know if I want to speak further on it, but I would say all trails in the city of Roslin and I, and that we may have to hear from our public works.
That's what I was going to say. Do you want Darren to?
Yeah.
Darren, you might be putting you on the spot, though, but if you don't know that we're coming, but if you can't answer, Darren.
If you don't want to, that's fine.
It's not that I don't want to, it's, I just know that the trails within, you know, within our boundary, well, within the, the town, anyway. We have quite a few calls of, of ditching issues, of, you know, dangerous trees, of obstacles, garbage, stuff like that. So I'm just not sure how that would work. You know, when they're outside, you know, somebody phones and complains, want a trail up on the reservoir, then, you know, we, we direct them to the Trail Society. So I'm just not sure where that, where that line would be.
Is there a union issue as well?
Not right now. There wouldn't be, but potentially there could be.
I'll just say, whoa, you seconded.
Well, this situation has been in place for a number of years, right? Because the East End also supports the Cootie Columbia Trail Society. So Roslin pays our portion there, as well as paying the portion directly. And originally that was because the trails were more focused and concentrated around Roslin. But the trails are quite popular throughout the whole East End, and, and the Cootie Columbia Trail Society is doing more work throughout. And the trails in Roslin don't benefit only Roslin residents. I know a lot of people that will come from Fooville and come up here and walk one of our trails. I, I mean, they, they think nothing of it because they enjoy it. These are trails that benefit the whole East End. So I was getting to the, to a point where I'm wondering whether this arrangement that has been in place for a number of years is still wanted. I don't know. And I was going to ask council whether you want me to present that to the East End, that maybe it's time that we just share it, Cootie Columbia Trail Society through the East End. I don't, I don't know. I mean, is it time? But because Roslin is paying blind share, really, because of this arrangement. So it, does it still, is it still warranted? I don't know.
I think the, the, this request is for twenty-five, and I think through the regional district, we pay, I think the total.
Sixty-six and we're seventeen percent.
Yeah, so we're, say, a fifth of sixty-six, so it was roughly ten grand, right? So that's now thirty grand that Roslin's paying.
Yeah, it's around thirty-three, something like that.
Around something like that, so that we would be paying. So I think the other thing that, to me, you know, makes me wonder a bit, is the Trail Society has now come to council and asked for a cost of living increase. We haven't given Public Works, our operations, we haven't increased anything by cost of living. In fact, we've gone the other way. So I think if, if our, our core services can live without a cost of living, I think our Trail Society can live without a cost of living. That's my point. So the recommendation from Mr. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Wallace, is to have all trails maintained in the city of Roslin by Trail Society. So that's where we are.
I have a question through you, Public Works. In our, in our budget line item here, we have for recreation trails is thirteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Is that, and that says year-to-date, twenty thirteen out of a, a budget of fourteen thousand. So are these the same trails that we're talking about? Is that, is that the urban network that you, when you mentioned?
It is, it is. The Centennial Trail.
So it's Centennial, so we're talking about Centennial also?
Yes, Centennial is one that we maintain.
Okay, does, does that include the plowing, the, the grooming for Centennial in the winter? Because that's, that's a pretty big number. If we're asking, they're, they're asking for twenty thousand, five hundred to maintain the outside of the city limits trails. And we're saying, yeah, you're going to, we'll give you that amount, but you'll, you'll handle the interior trails too, which we currently budget fourteen thousand. I think that's an unrealistic expectation. But I need to know whether it does include the snow plowing, I mean, the grooming, because that, I know in the past that's been seven thousand dollars, maybe. I don't know if that's included there or not.
I think also in, I believe in the, in the financial statements received from the Cootie Columbia Trail Society, they have roughly, was it fifty-four thousand in the bank? Is that the number?
Well, they're, they're, it might have been, but they're trying to raise money for that linkage up to Nanspring, which would be a terrific tourist asset.
It's fifty-four. Fifty-four, thirty-four. But anyway, I think, again, you know, we're, operation-wise, we're, we're cutting everything back, and then here we go. With the group, with the group that has that much money in the bank and they come to us for a cost of living increase, you know.
Oh, wait.
I got a problem.
What page is that on? Sorry, I, I never saw that.
It's been offline.
The last report.
Well, my recommendation was a little.
Yes.
Might have been a little evil, actually, but.
Very creative, though. We like that.
But it was looking at it from, it's a, you, there's a relationship right now with the city and, and the Trail Society. And there are, let's call them touch points within a community, things that people remember, your mind remembers, and trails are one of them for the city of Roslin. If one group could be responsible for those touch points, and we make recommendations to them on how they can increase the, the value to the community for those things. I think they would come up with some really creative ways of doing it, and, and I guess we would have to probably look closer at whether that's winter maintenance also. Fair enough. But if we can somehow reduce our budget to a certain degree, but have a, you know, a relative, a relatively professional organization that creates that continuity throughout all the whole trail system, I think it's beneficial to the community.
So I'll just, I'll just ask Louis.
Just to confirm the Centennial trail grooming is included.
Okay.
And is it, and what's the amount for that?
Hey, it's a, five thousand, five hundred.
Okay, because that's nothing the Trail Society could do, and that takes specialized equipment, right?
That'd be contracted to the specialized equipment, but relative to saw off, then it's a small, a tiny little, um, saving.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the recommendation, do you have it?
They might not want to do it.
I know, but let's, but we can always proceed with this, and then if it's not going to work, we change it, right? I mean, it's not the end of the world. So she read the seconded. I wonder if, Cynthia, maybe you can just read the.
So that the Committee of the Hall recommends to council to fund the Cootie Columbia Trail Society in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred dollars for two thousand and fourteen, and that they be responsible for all trails within the city of Roslin.
Okay, thanks. Counselor?
Well, I'm just wondering, I don't want to throw out a deferral motion because then the whole discussion stops, right? But it seems like we need more information here. So.
But this is a recommendation, so we can.
Well, I know, but it's just a recommendation. And then it's not, it doesn't, nothing happens with it until, are we going to receive these later in the regularity?
Uh, we could do that, but I mean, we, we would get, make these recommendations.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, how can we get more information? Discussion with KCTS?
We will make these recommendations and they will.
Time rush to have to consider it.
They will come back for budget discussions. So if it's not possible, then we have to make another.
I could make an amendment saying, in consultation with KCTS and Public Works.
But I, I don't know if we need that. We, we will get that. Tracy, go ahead.
If council wants to go through with this recommendation, I would just contact KCTS in the morning and let them know, and then they can come back to us with a lot of things. We can do this, we can't do this.
Okay, yeah, Jill.
Yeah, thanks. Um, it just, I, I kind of was interested in Counselor Wallace, you know, taking some to the regional district, because I'm always in favor of that. Them helping the regional entity part of it. But, you know, we do, we, we fund nineteen. It's twelve thousand, our portion at the regional district level. So that's thirty-one thousand dollars in total. The, you know, the greatest part, the, the lion's share of the trails are in Roslin. I can't remember, I'm, I was looking at the number, eighty-something percent or whatever. And they have built more trails in the region, just recently, last year or so, for sure. But we do have a lion's share of the trails, and I think that's why it kind of has looked this way funding-wise. But I would certainly support you having some kind of conversation at the regional district to see if you could further that, if it benefits Roslin taxpayers, right, for sure. And the only thing I would say was, Darren, do you have an, if I could.
Yes.
A number on how many hours we're kind of spending on, you know, even, you know, the number of hours on our urban trails?
Rural trails.
Well, our trails within the town size.
About a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty hours a year? A hundred and fifty hours per year?
Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty.
So that might be information you want to give to the KCTS or anything else because.
Yeah, and some of that is going to be during the winter, right? Like, we have to shovel the snow into the tunnels, you know, before the baking grooming and stuff like that, too. And it's ice maintenance in the tunnels and it's.
So that's a winter maintenance as well, right? So could, could you separate that out, the, the winter maintenance somehow?
I'd probably say about twenty hours, or for, for winter.
Okay. So a hundred and thirty hours for summer maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, but I think.
Yeah, anyway, I just, I'm just curious.
But I think on the recommendation, we can get those, that kind of information for us, right?
I think we need to, in our communication to the Trail Society, we need to be a little more, a little more specific. Because what I'm hearing are winter maintenance, like the grooming of Centennial, throwing ice in the tunnels, they don't keep a crew on in, in the winter of trail people, right? So maybe if we could modify it to say that we would, for, for this, we'd get them to do the summer maintenance, and the city would still do the winter. Might be more realistic.
You're right. But as was just spoken, the, you know, the phone call will go out tomorrow, and this is the recommendation, and what can you do? And then that will come back.
Well, as long as they know that they're.
Of course, of course.
Okay. And the other comment I'd like to say is, is when you talk about an organization that has fifty-four thousand dollars in the bank, they're planning for projects in the future that benefit the community. So I don't think, because somebody comes to us with money in the bank, it means that, oh, well, we shouldn't give them money because they've got money in the bank, because they have, they have plans, they've got strategic, you know, objectives for that money.
No, counselor, but I, I think what I was trying to get at is they're asking for a one-point-two cost of living increase.
Right, I understand that.
And we, as a council, have not been giving our operations one increase.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the cost of living.
So my point is, if they have fifty-four thousand in the bank, that might cover the one-point-two cost of living increase. And if you lose one percent of fifty-four thousand dollars because you have to cover your cost of living, so be it.
Okay, all right. I misunderstood what you were saying, that with fifty-four thousand in the bank.
Okay. Did you get that page?
Yeah, it's right in front of you. Thank you.
So on the recommendation, call a question, all in favor? Pose, most is carried. Recommendation is carried. Going somewhere?
Tourism Roslin.
Okay, Tourism Roslin carries on here. Their request is now for twenty-seven, one fifty-one, and tied to business licenses. I don't know that that's the amount that's tied. I mean, I'll probably, that won't explain. Anyway, they're requesting twenty-seven, one fifty-one.
Sorry, can I just clarify on that?
Yeah.
Um, they asked for it to be directly linked to the business licenses. So that's the twenty-seven is the business licenses and plus the five thousand, five hundred for the intermunicipal, uh, business licenses. So they just stated a direct link to business licenses.
They aren't specifically requesting the business license monies. Is that correct? Or they are?
They are specifically asking for the business licenses and revenue.
Oh, maybe we should.
Okay, is there any?
Can't promise it twice, can we?
No, is there any recommendation?
Well, I'll make, I'll recommend that we allot the amount that is being requested of, is it, which one's being requested?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, one fifty-one or whatever.
That's two thousand and thirteen's number, yeah.
Twenty, oh.
So if it wasn't.
Twenty-eight, five?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that is the business number from last year.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Plus the, plus the Smiths called, five thousand, five hundred, I think, include on that.
Okay, Jill, Jill's.
Yeah, so they're asking for the thirty-two, uh, so you said twenty, okay, excuse me, twenty-seven thousand was business licenses?
Yes.
Five thousand is intermunicipal business licenses.
So it's also then.
So that's thirty-two thousand dollars, but their request, are they, is that what they're requesting, thirty-two now or twenty-eight?
They, they requested the business licenses. So I put the two thousand and thirteen number on there. Then she called me back and said she wanted to include intermunicipal business licenses on top of that. So I just put the twenty-seven. Do you have to have a number? So it's actually the thirty-two and a half.
Okay, and then, all right, Jill, so you're, we're all on the same page. That's, that wouldn't take the business license fees that we just recommended from somebody else.
I wish I would have known that prior.
Are leaving this?
No, I don't think so. No, we already, no, we've already done that. If it, if it goes back to that conversation, I'll ask you to leave, but it shouldn't. We've already made the recommendation. We're not going back to that.
Wow. Well, I thought it was the twenty-five that was down there, but they're actually requesting thirty-two five. Is that correct, Lawrence?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I'll just, while we're waiting for, uh.
Yeah, I need a second to.
I'll make a recommendation.
Process.
I just, before that, if I can just speak to the, a little bit of history. Tourism Roslin was formed by the UBCM, right? UBCM, way back, was it six or seven, oh, six or seven, I can't remember the date. Anyway, they put in thirty thousand dollars to kickstart Tourism Roslin based on the new provincial initiative, Tourism Initiative. So for those two years, the UBCM put in the thirty grand. City of Roslin took over in the third year, I believe it was, the third year. And we put in thirty grand. The purpose of that money was to get Tourism Roslin up and running. We have now, I think, a very successful organization. We, as a, as a city, have guaranteed through the M Municipal Resort Development Tax. MRDT tax, we've guaranteed Tourism Roslin sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for five years. That is tax that, that is, uh, monies that comes to the city that we give out. So that's sixty-seven thousand dollars we've allocated for five years. We have also allocated twenty-four thousand for the Resort Municipality Initiative. The RMI Initiative is also a funding that goes, comes through the province, through the, the resort municipalities, which Roslin is the resort municipality. That twenty-four thousand now is used for, I guess, the shuttle in this instance. The Resort Municipal Initiative funding is used, has been used by most of the resort municipalities for building infrastructure. For example, Tofino, they use their RMI funding to do a downtown revitalization. In our case, we've given that funding to Tourism Roslin to proceed with their, with their shuttle initiative. So the additional thirty-two thousand here would, in rough numbers, say that we're funding Tourism Roslin to the tune of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. With this thirty-two thousand. So that's a little bit of history, but I think it's, it's really important to note that Tourism Roslin has become a very successful. And the monies that were allocated by the UVC, by the UBCM and the cities of Roslin have helped them get to this point, and they're up and running.
I'll make a recommendation that we support Tourism Roslin for twenty-five thousand dollars this year. And the reason being, yes, they are up and running and they are very successful. We are a tourist town. They do a great job of getting us out there in the public eye. Without them, we, I do not believe we would have near as much success. The shuttle's been a raging success. If you read in the port, they're average a hundred and thirty-seven people a day, which is great. Also, the RMI funding was used for signage that's around town, which really helps people find their way. I, I think they've done a really good job, and I think we can continue to support them, but I would like to decrease the amount yearly going forward. But I don't believe in cutting groups off completely, right? I mean, I think you can make some cuts, but I think they still are worthy of our support.
So that was the recommendation, right?
Yeah.
And it hasn't been seconded yet?
Oh, I'm sorry. I spoke to it.
Counselor's spirit, seconded by, uh.
But now you don't have to listen to me anymore, too.
No, I don't have to listen to you anymore. You're done.
I'm sure it, I'm good.
So, yeah, I, I think, I totally agree that they've done a great job, and I totally agree that they, they have been supported entirely. So, yeah, I, I think, I totally agree that they've done a great job, and I totally agree that they, they have been supported entirely here, not entirely, but councils have been very supportive of Tourism Roslin. I think now it may be time to, to say, okay, you know, we, we, the city and the people that pay the taxes here have got you up and running, and now it's time to decrease some of that burden from the tax, no.
Sorry, sorry, for that.
From the, from the, from the tax base that is Tourism Roslin. I think, I know we can increase the funding, but at the end of the day, what, what does that funding do? Do we hire another person? I mean, there's only so much one person can do at Tourism Roslin. So if, I don't know, and the focus there, and she's been very focused, but I don't know that increasing the funding increases the effectiveness. And I think that, I agree with you, I think that total cut of funding, I don't think that that's, that's what we want to do. But I think, as mentioned earlier by one of the councils, I think we have to make some tough decisions. And this is one, I think, that can be made and still remain very viable. Counsel Wallace, you had your hand up.
You know, I don't, I don't disagree, twenty-five thousand seems like, you know, it kinda sends a message that there's support there. But the direction is that you need to take the burden off the taxpayer. So, you know, you know, I, it, it feels right somehow. I just noticed something odd in their expense statement here.
Page?
Fifty-two of one ninety-seven, they're showing rent, and also city taxes. Why would there be city taxes listed if they're paying rent?
Because they pay a portion of the city taxes in the building that they're renting from. That's their deal with their landlord.
It's an interesting deal.
I know, it is weird.
Okay. Can I have one? I haven't been supported.
Don't let other people speak if anybody else wants to speak.
Okay, I just forgot to say something.
Go ahead, yeah?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I, I agree, you know, Tourism Roslin has been a real force in our community, and, you know, historically, there's been significant support, but again, some of that has flown, has flows through the city to them to get this whole tourism municipality to where it is today. And, you know, and signage was significant, that was one of their capital projects. There, just all the signage in town, the tourism signage and the...
The RMI funding.
Yeah, the RMI funding, right, so it's not like they haven't, it hasn't benefited the downtown core because it certainly has benefited the wayward signage. And, yeah, I mean, the way they, they've, you know, used their money, it's been very professionally run, and I think that everyone in Roslin indirectly, one way or the other, is really benefiting from Tourism Roslin. So I'm in favor of that, I probably would be in favor of even a little bit more, but I'll, I'll go with that for now. Because we do have to start weaning, if that's a word to use, to start to wean some of the dependency upon the city because it's just, we have a lot of costs and expenses, and we really don't have great revenue in the city of Roslin. So, you know, we have to, we have to start with that weaning process, I think.
I don't know what to do about this. I, um, I mean, I think it's a sign of achievement of any community group to be able to wean themselves or, you know, become independent of the city, right? And there is an awful lot of public money going through this organization already. And, you know, public money that is allocated to the city, that the city allocates to Tourism Roslin. There's an awful lot of cash flow, you know, and I mean, for example, ski shows, they take place over a short amount of time, and, and they're able to spend thirty thousand dollars on them, you know, like, that, it doesn't say here, but in our, in the last meeting notes that are in tonight's notes. So, I don't know. I mean, I agree with the sentiment that, you know, to slowly wean, and anybody, any group who's able to do that should do that. And I would think that it would be a sense of pride to be able to do that, to wean themselves away from, from the city. And so I kinda think, you know, I'm, I'm not proposing we give them nothing, but I'm also not, I'm thinking twenty-five is, given that last year we gave them twenty-eight-five, that's only two thousand dollars less, that's not really a wean, that's like a, you know, stretch the extreme a little, it's not really, you know, letting go of them. I don't know, I would prefer something that's smaller, and I think they would survive very successfully without it. Whereas I think we could use the extra, you know, five or whatever it is, towards one of, you know, that would be an entire other small group, for example, that could spend the time.
Okay, and I'll speak to the motion, because I haven't quite yet. I think the reduction is necessary, and I think twenty-five is not enough of a reduction. I would, I would think something on the tune of fifteen. I know there's been some increased costs at Tourism Roslin, I think one of them was, I don't know that I can say it publicly because it might still be encumbered, but I know that there was some costs that they've taken on there, and I think that that's fine. However, I, I see twenty-five as not really the hard decision we need to make, and I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of twenty-five. I would be more happy with something around fifty, that's my comment. So we have, we have a recommendation, Cynthia, please.
The recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommends to council to fund Tourism Roslin with about twenty-five thousand dollars for two thousand.
Thank you, on that, all in favor? Posed?
I guess that was an affirmation.
You're good? Carried. Can we get, uh, Carrie back, please, let's get Carrie back.
Well, just a second, I have another motion I'd like to make. And I'm not sure how to phrase this, but a few of us have mentioned this. I really think that somehow Tourism Roslin and the Chamber of Commerce need to be functioning together.
You gotta be careful.
You want me to go? Oh, sorry, now we have you in the room.
But I, I think generically, generically, you could say that groups with similar interests should cooperate, and I don't think you have to use those...
I think it needs to be pretty dry.
Should I go?
Yeah, well, yeah, but if you go, now we've seen it before, yeah.
Get a few more conflicts here.
Good thing we don't do anything.
Right.
Good thing what?
I mean, I'm, I'm being facetious, I said, "Good thing we don't do anything," or "We're not on the boards that have these conflicts." Because we do lots, but, you know, I'm doing it.
You can, I could just give your other one times two.
Save the paper.
Go say hi to Carrie. Okay, go ahead, one.
Okay. The council requests staff to discuss with Tourism Roslin and the Chamber of Commerce how the two groups can share resources or whatever in order to create more efficiencies. Is that good enough?
Maybe.
Don't you love it when we do that?
You could leave the "or whatever" out, maybe.
So I, well, I think maybe just state the, the intent, by the way, and what you want is those two groups to get their heads together and see how they can work it out.
Exactly, it seems that they, you know...
So, and you're asking whom to, you're asking...
Well...
Yeah, go ahead, Trace.
Your worship, what I get is that you're just asking for the, the city to be, the, the medium, and we're supposed to come together to discuss some efficiencies there.
Okay, yeah, so you, you're pretty good, pretty well about that, Cynthia, okay, is there a second to that?
Second, I, I...
I don't know how much discussion we've done.
Well, I was just also asked that we get some kind of feedback back about the result of this conversation.
When we get, when we get the recommendation that comes back from motion, we'll also set up a couple people to be the leaders of it. How's that? Okay, but we can't do that until we pass the recommendation. Okay, so on that, all in favor? Carried. Yes, please, Jody and Carrie. Okay, we're on bear aware twenty-five hundred dollar, and, and I think your request is a three-year agreement, so is there a recommendation to that?
I'll make a recommendation that we support their request.
And the three years?
Sure.
Okay, so, okay, discussion.
Well, I mean, it's pretty clear, they, you know, they've had twenty-five hundred dollars kind of as their budget consistently since the beginning of time, I'm not sure when that was, two thousand and nine, at least. And they seem to do a, you know, I mean, it's important, right? You know, rather than seeing bears destroyed, it's important that we, you know, we educate and use their bearware program to, to, I guess, assist in the environmental aspect of keeping our wildlife safe and keeping our, you know, obviously, our, our community citizens safe. And they've always done a good job from the programs I've seen, and when they've come into the school programs. And, yeah, I, I think it's a minimal amount of money for a, for a program that is well received by the community and very important.
Okay, plus more?
Oh, I agree.
Any further? Counselor Moon?
Um, I'm okay with the twenty-five hundred, but, you know, again, the three-year agreement is, I know it's been consistent, but it's been consistent because we had three-year agreements, we had to keep consistent. Um, I know that there are a lot of people who are very much against bearware, and, you know, probably know there'll be seven people sitting here who are all against bearware next year, I mean, I, I would, I know it's just twenty-five hundred dollars, but why not just keep everything consistent and stick to one year?
Uh, yeah, so, do you want to speak, or?
Sure, um, you know, I agree with the comments I just heard about the three-year commitment. So I, I, and the other thing is bearware, bearware is now wild safe B.C., you know, they would agree. But, yes, I think it is an important, an important initiative for our community, they have done a lot of work. But I don't think that we should be making three-year commitments at this point in time.
Counselor Fisher, do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to go?
I'm okay with the three-year commitment, I mean, relatively speaking, I mean, there...
Is that the small comment?
Yeah, the, the other comment, the other more social comment is that we've never had more coyotes, raccoons, and bears in the history of North America than we do right now. But I fundamentally, I see this as protecting people, more than protecting wildlife, relatively speaking. But we've got a lot of bears, they're okay, they're doing okay.
No, it's, it's a conflict we're trying to...
Well, and I, I don't know, I, it's only twenty-five hundred dollars, I guess, is the statement, but to me, that isn't a statement. I mean, what does that twenty-five hundred dollars accomplish? There's more literature, et cetera, out there on bear-proofing your community than, than is possible to absorb. I don't know, do, how, when do we have to stop educating the public about, no, no, it's my turn, I'll let you talk. When do we have to stop educating the public not to put their garbage out? I mean, come on. Pardon?
I don't think you can stop.
Well, no, we can't, but I mean, you know, I know the director does, works hard, I know all that, but it's just another example to me of what we fund that, quite frankly, is, is not what we do as a municipality.
My little bear.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, I think she was first.
Uh, Councilwoman, have you spoken?
Uh, well, I did a little bit, but the only thing, the only thing I wanted to say is I think she does a great service because when there are complaints, she goes door to door, she goes to where there've been problems and works with the actual people. And I agree with Counselor Wallace, we can never stop educating people about not leaving out their garbage until everyone knows the lesson, which they clearly don't, because we still have the problems. It's a small amount of money, she leverages it very well, and the programs that she does in the schools are really good because kids have little sponges, and it's excellent to get them, you know, learn, you can learn these lessons early. So I think it's a perfectly reasonable expense of municipal funds because it does help keep our community safe and hopefully cleaner with less garbage. And I think not doing a three-year commitment is just silly, but I'll leave that.
And you did suggest the three years, you're, oh my goodness, sorry.
That is serious trouble.
That's my knee.
You owe huge...
That's my alarm for my regular meeting in half an hour.
So you won't forget.
Okay, so, so just, just a comment, you suggested three years, I actually didn't, so...
No, I know, I didn't, I asked, I asked if that, if the commitment was three years.
Well, yeah, I, you know, sometimes these things going forward, but if council's not in favor of that, I'd be in favor with just, you know, for one year. But the, you know, programs like that, well, it's like, say, B.C. now it's called, you know, they speak of us as a community too. You know, and they, they speak of the values that we hold, and I understand there's lots of wildlife, but, you know, there's habitat issues and all that, and we could go to the town on that, Counselor Fisher and I about that conversation. However, it's a small amount of money, and it represents in a way who we are and what our values are, and I think that's important.
I, I just, sometimes it's my role to play devil's advocate.
Totally, as is mine.
Who made the motion?
Uh...
Okay, I was wondering if you were planning on withdrawing the three-year agreement thing.
No.
No, I'm gonna need that.
Okay, so I'm gonna call on the, on the recommendation for twenty-five hundred for three years, all here. Posed? Motion defeated, do you want to just...
Twenty-five hundred for one year.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Posed, carried.
Okay.
Financial assistance rec programs, no, I just a second, I think we need some clarity on that.
This is financial assistance for anybody who wants to go to the Trail Aquatic Center as a group and such. I just simply carried forward what the previous budget was, as you can see, two thousand and thirteen, so nowhere near that number, so...
Can I just ask a question?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna change, but...
No, that's okay. Sorry, were you done, Melissa?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering what happened in two thousand and thirteen, is there something that hasn't been included yet?
To not, to be honest, I don't know the detail of these numbers properly, I would have to go and go and look at that.
Well, Tracy has some input.
Your worship, um, we've really only had two groups continually applying for this, and that was your seniors and Stingrays. And that's the total come to. I, I would want to...
Why was it so much more before though?
No, but we put a number in, right?
We, yeah, that's...
We budgeted a number, which I think was twenty grand at one time, wasn't it?
Yeah, it did start at twenty.
Yeah.
And then we, we decreased it over time when there wasn't the usage, right? Everybody remember that, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, but the actual, there's like seven, six, eight, if you go backwards, right? So why are, is the, you know, where...
Your worship, it looks to me that perhaps, um, the way the applications came in, that in two thousand and twelve, maybe the seniors came in there twice, or, um, was it the Stingrays amount isn't in there for two thousand and thirteen? And I'm wondering if it's because they always apply in September, and they didn't apply in September this year.
Anyway...
Not this year, sorry, of two thousand and thirteen, I have not received their application yet.
So anyway, I...
So that would be why.
But the eighty-five hundred that we have in here is for groups that wish to use Trail Aquatic Center. So I think that's, you know, we did have around twenty grand in there. I think it's interesting to note, too, that Beaver Valley has decided, I know there's lots of controversy there, but the Beaver Valley has decided not to contribute this time for very similar reasons to what we had, when we decided that, I will never use the word blackmail, but that we weren't getting enough chance to, to have our say and, and be fair. Beaver Valley felt exactly the same way, just thought I'd bring that up for history.
Yeah, just in addition to that, I think they're setting up a fund that they will help their residents with the...
Right, and we've, and I've had discussions like this, Mary Chichi. So anyway, the number that we're leaving in here, if we are, is eighty-five hundred?
I just put two thousand and thirteen budget number in there, just for a number.
Yeah, so we have that number, so we need a motion, or a recommendation or something.
Make a motion, we reduce it to seven thousand.
Recommendation to reduce to seven thousand, seconded that?
Seconded.
Okay, sure, there's a discussion, I, this, this may be something we don't even use that much, but it's there.
Can we just clarify why that two thousand and thirteen number is so much lower? You know, and before this comes back to council for us to...
Yeah.
Your worship, we did not receive an application from the Stingrays in two thousand and thirteen, and I don't know why they didn't put that...
They're foiled or something, or...
No, they're still, but maybe there, there was no children from here that wanted to, I don't know, but it could be a lot of... No, they're still, but maybe there, there was no children from here that wanted to, I don't know, but could be a lot of reason.
It's still coming in two thousand and fourteen, but for two thousand and thirteen, we did not receive, we did get their application in September, but we did not receive one this year.
Okay, so, you okay with all that input?
I have a question.
How do you want to speak for it?
So I guess this is probably through you to-
Maybe the hall.
Okay, um, but if they were to come this year with last year's usage, I'm assuming that they would still get last year's budget amount, not, that wouldn't apply to this year's.
Nope, done.
They didn't apply for it, they didn't get it.
But wasn't used, right? Except, um-
Two thousand and thirteen.
The purpose of two thousand and thirteen is closed, we're in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, even though the dates, it would be date from before, okay, well, interesting. Let's go to the floor.
My question was, the fund is first come, first served, so if we put it in at seven thousand and we get ten thousand worth of application, only the first seven thousand actually get funded and the rest don't, just so people know.
Or council makes the decision.
Right.
So the recommendation said that, yeah, I know, please, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering, on spent funds, like, um, what has been allotted in that fund for the last number of years, it hasn't been spent, the money that was there, it hasn't been spent fully. So does that just, the surplus just goes into the general coffers, it doesn't stay within that fund?
I would have to check in the reserve funds, but I don't recall anything, I've seen anything to that effect, so it would, yeah, just get sold up and go into the general reserve funds.
Okay.
Okay, anything further, so on the recommendation, which is seven thousand, all fair? Posed, carried.
I'm confused.
Mis- miscellaneous grants in aid, and that's, I'm sure that's just a number as well, eighteen hundred.
Yeah, I just put in, well, it appears I put in two thousand and thirteen budget with one spent increase, but we've not had anything in two thousand and thirteen, so.
I think, did you want to say something before?
I was gonna say, that's, that's the, the small grants that we give for, you know, waiving line or subsidy, um, kind of things.
So, I was just gonna clarify that, but I'll make a recommendation that we leave it at eighteen hundred.
I'm second.
I'm just questioning how we talk about it, if it's not ever going to be eighteen hundred.
Sorry, was that lost?
Sorry, I'm just, um, if that, if that, if, if the historical figures are where we've waived, um, hold fees or anything like that, then I'd question how it's been recorded in two thousand and thirteen, else then perhaps it hasn't been recorded, is what I'm suggesting.
We haven't done it very often.
I think we kept saying no.
But we haven't done it very often.
We kept saying no.
Right. We didn't do it very often.
No, we kept saying no, well, another chance later. Um, so you're suggesting that we just leave eighteen hundred, why?
I'm saying we leave it in eighteen hundred and perhaps track it, uh, more accurately this year.
Wow.
If it hasn't been tracked accurately, we don't know.
That's, we don't know. At this moment, we don't know, I'm sure we do know, but is there a second or that?
Yeah, right.
All right, any further discussion on that?
No.
All in fair, posed, carried. Uh, Heritage Commission, I think it's, yeah, six thousand?
What was the recommendation we made last committee meeting for them for?
Regarding the old cemetery.
Oh, that was separate.
That was, that went to the regional districts.
That goes to the city. Oh, that's regional, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a recommendation that, uh, we give them five thousand dollars in the belt tightening spirit of our budgeting this year. They do a great, they do a great job, right?
I do.
But we all have to make sacrifices.
Your second, Wallace?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? On that, all fair? Posed, carried. Way too faster. Sustainability Commission, I think on our sheet we have one thousand, and the number now is fourteen-five, lowest of the correction?
I'll be the last one, but if you had a choice, I'd say-
Sorry, I'd ask you the hard question.
Yeah, it's fourteen-five, fourteen-five.
Thank you.
Yeah, mine was fourteen-five. Okay, everybody aware of the fourteen-five? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I make a recommendation, I, I really appreciate the work that this group does, and I, as you know, was distressed that we cut them off at the legs last year. Um, although they've given a really good breakdown of what they want to do this year in the spirit of, uh, you know, reductions and whatnot, I will make my recommendation of ten thousand dollars instead of the fourteen-five.
Need a second or?
Yeah.
Need a second?
Give you a second.
Okay.
I put them back in business, um, they might have to make some modifications to their plan, but I think they do really good work for the community, uh, overall, making this a more livable, resilient, outlandish community that we've, uh, that we've set out in our strategic sustainability plan to support, and I think we need to support them.
I agree, um, I, I did notice, I, I felt, yeah, I felt that when I looked at the outreach events, you know, and, you know, those are, you know, like the Earth Day activity, those kind of things. I think those, some of those kinds of things are either just gonna have to go through what, we do give the Sustainability Commission if we do, um, yeah, because, and the justification around the economic development, thousand dollars, I didn't feel that that was very strong. Um, but I certainly support this group and we do have a sustainability plan, and I think it's important that we keep those guiding documents in mind when we're making decisions. And this is one group that does work really hard to attain and achieve, uh, those goals, you know, in the plan, so, um, I'm in favor of that recommendation.
Okay, I think one of the things that is in here too is the indicators project.
Yeah.
I think, uh, we, the city, uh, have that, uh, well under control. With, uh, we can do it through planning, go ahead.
Yeah, your worship, um, speaking with our planning department, the indicators, well, and Columbia Basin Trust, um, I think that that is something that the city can take on without, without using funds allocated to the S.C. Um, the RDI has made some movement towards helping us to do that. Um, Stacy will be putting all the information that needs to go into that indicators project together. Um, Marie Osh, who was our assistant planner back, um, has, she's one who worked on the indicators project previously, and she's indicated she would find us assistance, um, to do that, we'd have to pay her, but it would certainly save a lot of time and might, um, have that done in how.
So that'd be one that we, we would do, so that's-
Yeah.
Of twenty-five hundred.
So if, yeah, whatever it is, so if ten's the number, then that's maybe not their responsibility, I, I'll just maybe speak to it. But I think it's really important to note that, a couple of comments about cutting them off at the knees, I agree.
That was her.
I, well, I-
I said annihilated.
Annihilated, that was a better one. I, I really don't think that that's fair, because I think that provided, uh, a whole bunch of resources, I've been to a few meetings once in a while, and, uh, we have two staff people, two counselors, and that is huge support to this commission. Uh, I think, I, I read in here that, uh, this money's required as the glue that holds them together. Well, lately, in the past few years, we have had numerous task forces that have been developed by council, uh, some that have been very successful, and I think all of them have been very successful. We can go back to, uh, the Select Committee on the Museum, way back in oh-nine, we can go to the sewer task force, we can go to the communications task force, all of which will run through council. Council made the recommendation to make the task force, and the task force replied, reported directly to council. I think that this is, I really believe that the model that we have here is not the most efficient model there is. I think the task forces, we council, should develop task forces that we wish to see done, and those task forces report directly to council. I think we have a step here, as was mentioned in oh-nine, I believe, when we first took this on by a former counselor, that what we did is we added another step in the process that really isn't necessary. Also, I think if we are all familiar with the bylaw, we have to be very clear that the bylaw states that it is council, council that directs the Sustainability Commission. And I think that we have gotten away from that, I think that there is, uh-
Sorry, I knew what was gonna happen, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Good timing.
Sorry.
I think that, uh, we have to get back to the clarity that it's council that makes the decision on what projects will be taken on. Because when we take on projects that they may fit the S.S.P., et cetera, if they're not driven by council, then there's no funding for them in the long run. So we, we could have, uh, projects to, to do whatever, but are we, are we, uh, making the best resources of our volunteers when those projects can't be done or, or can't be completed by council? So, I don't believe we ever chop them off at the knees, I don't believe we definitely annihilated them, I don't know that we have to, uh, support the lifeblood. I believe if it's irrelevant, it'll stay, I believe the people are great, I believe the task forces are relevant, and I also believe that it has to become form, if, if the current model stays as is, it has to become far more driven by council. And that could be my fault, could be Bayzon's fault, whomever, but it has to be, that has to happen because we are a little bit out there. On the, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, well, a couple of things, uh, for one thing, this commission brings the projects that they're proposing to council, we've seen all of them before they've undertaken them. They've been extremely successful, they did the energy diet, they've leveraged funds like crazy, they've, they've accomplished an awful lot, right? I think it's, I, I think actually they are working well, I think they worked better when there, there was a paid manager in the position to really direct and get, and get a lot of the, you know, a lot of the things done. Um, but I, I think council does have a role, we do direct them, and they are doing, you know, what we've talked about, they, they came to us with the idea about the innovative, innovative education program that they've got underway, and we supported that. They've come to us, you know, with the energy diet and the phases of that, and we've supported that. We've supported things like Earth Day and those other events that have happened to spread awareness, we've supported the strategic sustainability plan, maybe the last council supported more actively than this one did, but we still support it, we all ran on a platform saying we supported it, everyone said that at the all candidates meeting. So I don't think any of that has changed, right? So I think it's, you have to be careful not to, to say, well, we have to control every little thing, right? Sometimes it's okay to let other groups go out there and make progress on our behalf, and then we can sit back and enjoy the rewards that come to us at the UBCM when we win awards, you know, that kind of thing. So I think they've done a great job, and I, and I do believe we should support them.
I'm not disputing that, I'm saying, though, it's tough questions that we have to ask, can we operate task forces without an S.C.?
We'd do better with an S.C.
I, no, I said, can we? So, that's another, well, no, another ten now, that, uh, you gotta make tough decisions on, and that's, that's my point. Again, my job is to sometimes give another opinion. Go ahead.
Um, well, I agree with what Councilor Moore has said, and again, um, you know, Roslyn has an identity in, you know, B.C. and probably Canada, and who knows even in the world, because some of the, um, the sustainability practices that we have achieved and, um, you know, have, have accomplished, to the point where we have been rewarded. And this group, you know, I mean, it, it's changed, you said something about another step in the process, I wasn't clear on that, um-
Do you want me to clarify that?
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if council said we want a, an energy task force, can we, we form an energy task force, and that task force reports directly to council?
So you're talking about the bylaw and the commission, as, as that step in the process?
The bylaw, in my opinion, limits what the Sustainability Commission can do because of it, because of the, how it sets up the process. I said that for a long time, that it could function outside of this very easily and come for, uh, operating grant like anyone else, but it doesn't have to be by bylaw, and it would be a lot easier, in my opinion.
Well, you know, we-
It'd be a lot more flexible, but anyway.
But I'm just gonna say, we have, you know, you, you or whoever, you know, has, has the ability to bring that bylaw back to council and have that conversation. And if councils don't support the S.S.P., then it's up to council members to make those motions to bring it back, to relook at it, or revisit it, or whatever, but as long as that has been one of our guiding documents, then I think it's important that we try and keep that as somewhat of a focus, instead of just being helter-skelter. That's why you have plans, that's why you have an offici, uh, you know, OCP and, and, and those other plans. So, um, my argument against that, and, and if, if people want to bring back the bylaw and have that conversation about the structure of that body or that entity, then do so, you've got that right, rather than, um, just saying, saying that we could do it that way, then, you know, it's, it feels strong enough about it, then it needs to be changed, that's my comment.
Okay, but thank you, but we're talking about funding, right?
Yeah, so, but so right now, we have that as our guiding document.
The S.S.P. is the guiding, Sustainability Commission is not the guiding document.
It represents.
Well, the-
I understand.
Okay, you had your hand up.
Yeah, that was just a point that I wanted to make, that, um, there's a difference between supporting the S.S.P. and supporting the Sustainability Commission. I don't think that the Sustainability Commission, um, was necessitated by the strategic sustainability plan, it was an idea, um, and, uh, and, you know, there, there have been concerns about, um, the relationship between council and, and the Sustainability Commission and whether, um, and, and whether that structure is the best way to make sure that the community is, um, trying to address some of those action items. Um, so I, I just wanted to point that out, that the S.S.P. and the S.C. are not equal. Um, so, um, and, you know, when I look through the request, I, I tend to agree with the mayor and, um, you know, certainly the task force that came together, that they've been critical in, in helping meet with the sewer issues that we've been going through, completely volunteer, they don't, they're not asking for any operating funds. Um, and, uh, and just because there's no operating fund attached, there are certainly, um, staff resources that go toward keeping the Sustainability Commission going. So, um, I guess where I'm at is no, I'm not in favor of, uh, ten thousand dollars.
See if anybody else wants to speak before we go, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, for example, the communications task force is very much supportive of the S.C., and there was no budget associated, and there was very much a, you know, it was a short loop, but very much a direct function that was successful, fair enough. Um, the broadband task force, same thing, you know, we haven't spent a penny of, of-
You don't have a budget, but-
Yeah, and, you know, the, huge function and a lot of work, and, you know, that, a lot happened there. Um, and that's very much a supportive S.S.P. Um, I don't know, I'm, I, I like the Sustainability Commission and, I mean, the subject matter and the, the purpose for being, it makes sense to me. But that whole putting a step kind of in the way in the process, I don't think I'm understanding it necessarily in the same way that it's been expressed, but that is also described how I see it, is that it's almost like, it's almost like, you know, the S.C. is an entity unto itself that, you know, it's, it's, it's a group that we aren't part of, that, you know, get to run on supporting S.S.P. stuff. Whereas, you know, we on council, we just say, yeah, okay, that's a good idea, yeah, okay, that's a good idea, instead of saying, hey, we're on council now, for the next three years, we're gonna work on such, such thing. Which, I mean, you know, broadband, for example, that would be an example, still being able to do that. But, um, I don't know, something, something about the S.C. and council and the way it's set up, it just, it doesn't feel one hundred percent efficient or functional. I think that there is some other confirmation that could work better, and I don't even know what that would be exactly. Um, but I'm not going to be in favor of ten thousand dollars, although I'm not to say that I wouldn't be in favor of anything.
Counselor Fisher, you, anything to say, or you want to?
The S.S.P. is a guiding document, document for the city of Roslyn, the city of Roslyn, uh, elected officials, I think, with support from the community, needs to set those priorities early in a mandate, I guess, go the direction that I would go. to set those priorities early in a mandate, I guess, go the direction that I would go. And how that intertwines with the commission, I'm not sure. It's volunteer base, I understand that. I mean, I guess it's a pretty simple thing that way. And then individually, projects would come to a budget out of that, whether they're considered task force or specific projects. That's the way that I think it should go, and it's much easier to manage the money and follow the paper trail. So, and we're kind of doing that right now. So I will be in favor.
Okay, well, we brought the bylaw back, and we looked at it, we made some changes to it. We had plenty of time at that point to change the structure if we didn't like it. But we didn't have any issue with it at that time. Nobody said they didn't like the way it was working. This group has been extremely successful at leveraging funds. As we know, the CBT supports them, supports the work they do, supports the direction they go in quite generously and quite regularly. So it's a really good benefit that the city gets from that relationship there. I think, I don't think we can, you know, ignore that. I mean, talking about the benefit of the other task forces, which were extremely beneficial to the city, but they had a very, very narrow mandate. And if you're talking about how we're going to communicate what happens with, you know, the Columbia-Washington project, and people are talking about that, that's great. But that's very limited. That's not starting a new program like an innovative education program that's going to be bringing hopefully more people into town to do courses. There's costs associated with something like that. Same thing with the broadband task force. You've got a bunch of experts who are doing research and whatnot, but it's not like they're putting forward plans to go out and bring the community in to participate in something like the energy diet, for instance, where there might be costs associated. You know, same with the sewer task force. It was experts brought together to give advice on a specific project. I think it's completely different than what these task forces are doing. Now, if we want to take the initiative, if we want to show the initiative to direct the Sustainability Commission on specific things, they are always open to that. But we haven't. In the years that we've been on council, we haven't. And one of the reasons we haven't is because they come to us with very good ideas of things that we can do to make our community more sustainable, right? They've been successful, they have a proven track record, and I think $10,000, it's less than what they wanted, but, you know, the indicators project can go out of that. I think, you know, I don't think it's- I think it's a great investment, you know, I just, I think it's, I don't know, it's something, to me, it's almost like we're upset because there's another group that's doing things, that's not us doing it, and there's a little bit of a control issue here. It's like, we don't have enough control there, so, you know. But we have as much control as we want, right? Mayor, you go to those meetings, liaison goes, the alternate goes, staff goes. We have more involvement in that group, if we choose to use it, than any other group in the city. And we don't seem to be complaining about what the Heritage Commission does when they do their projects on their own, right? But when it's Sustainability Committee, it means, you know, to me, it's, I don't know, I just, I don't, I, it's just a difference of perspective, I guess, of what we value.
And I think any task force could, the mandate could be whatever we wished it to be. It doesn't have to be narrow, so.
But it has been narrow. The ones that were cited as really good effective task forces were very narrow. They're different than what's going on here. These are broader, project-based things that need some resources.
Yeah, but the, for whatever project, for X amount of dollars, we say, "Here's your mandate, task force." So that's my point, and I'm, again, that's what I do. Anything further on this? Yes?
Okay, so I may or may not agree with Councilor Spear that we should talk about this again as far as structure and everything goes. I don't know, I mean, I think now, you know, leading up until now, it took this long for me to get a real appreciation for the dynamic and the relationship and the, you know, so it really, prior to now, I wouldn't have been able to really make a decision or an analysis of the structure of the Sustainability Commission with the city council and all that. So, you know, I would be prepared to have the discussion if there's interest, but, you know, what it is, it's been like this for a long time, and it's something that we, at least we know, we all understand, I don't know, where we fit in the roles. But with the, that recommendation of $10,000, that was made prior to knowing that we wouldn't need to do this indicator thing, which was pretty specifically allotted the $2,500. So, I'm going to say no to the $10,000 because I think that maybe perhaps we should use the $500 within taking into account this indicators project, which prior to our discussion, I was very much in favor of covering.
Okay, I'm going to leave. I can leave.
Can I add on the $10,000?
Can you what?
Well, I was anticipating that the indicators project would probably be handled in the city. When I say $10,000, that's why I wasn't supporting the 14th, just so you know.
Yeah, okay, but anyway, so I like to move ahead with the recommendation. So, we have a recommendation, pretty basic, to fund the SC for $10,000, right? Okay? On that recommendation, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated. Is there another motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Second. I don't know if we need to keep discussing it. Anybody got anything to say about $7,500? Okay, on that motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated?
I'll make a motion for $5,000.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor? Motion's carried. All right, seven o'clock, recommendation's carried. So at seven o'clock, we're going to have to adjourn this committee hall meeting.
Can we just, um, when would you like to do this again?
Twenty-fifteen.
Let's make the, that's-
Monday, Monday, Monday.
Monday, everybody okay Monday? This coming Monday? It's going to be another busy day. It's the 20th. No, no. I'd like to get Thatcher. Can we leave this for a minute? Because, look at Thatcher's-
We can talk about it in the regular meeting.
Okay, let's talk about it in the regular meeting.
Sorry, I've just got another item I just wanted to run by you. So after the discussions on the cemetery last week, Jackie Drysdale spoke to Darren, and Darren has come to me and said, "Can we increase the maintenance on the cemetery by eight hundred?" So that would be from $3,000 to $3,800. And I just wanted to make sure, I'm going to apply to the regional district tomorrow. Do we want to up the application for the regional district by that additional 800?
Sure. And all I can do is come back and say no, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, brief, oh, we're-
Can I get to that one?
Yeah, the committee hall meeting is adjourned until, if we determine later. Two-minute break, and then we'll get back to the regular meeting. Okay? Pause for, what is it called? Convenience.
When we go into the regular, where that committee hall, just will amend that recommendation to add that $800 instead of having-
Sorry, say it again.
When we go into the regular meeting.
Oh, and-
And then that, that motion, committee hall.
When we approve the recommendation.
Yeah.
And that's coming up.
For that $800, yeah.
Okay, so, eat, drink, and be merry for a couple minutes.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Good night.
What have we got there?
You know, whenever I look at the new city thing, I keep seeing a piano. Does anybody else see a piano? Do you see a piano? I keep seeing a piano.
Do you see what?
A piano. I look at that and I see a piano.
Oh, maybe we should amend it. Hey, I didn't want that one. That one, I was in the chair, and you weren't even here. I got, I got, what do you call that, you know, politics? I got, um-
I thought you did.
Well, it was handcuffed. No, because we took out the ones I wanted at the beginning. It was-
Quad proof?
Well, who was here? Because that probably-
I was here, I was here.
No, no, we got some people that were-
We voted for it.
Put together a thing and made recommendations, and that's why that was-
It's ugly. It's ugly.
But that's interesting.
I know. That was, that's what she said, she almost invited- I want to go back and look at the man, because you remember, we got down, there wasn't a choice.
Yeah. You know that dog's 15 years old? And she had cancer, and they had a tumor in her-
No.
Felsh's dog, it's not a bubble. Everybody's, people took the dog home and said that they were neglecting it, and I was like, you know what? The dog needs to be shot, I mean.
What are you talking about?
Felsh's dog, Bill Husky, you know.
That didn't run either?
No, not yet, but she's 15.
Yeah.
And she's always been an outside dog, right?
Yeah.
Well, people were saying that they're neglecting her and doing, well, she's still wandering around and doing her thing, and does a caretaker take care of her?
Which she's always done.
She's always-
Oh, yeah, she's always been independent.
She'd give her to a family that cares, you know, that dog would-
Really?
I'm thinking to myself, "Oh, my God, people." Like, it's like a farm dog. It's not a inside foo-foo dog.
Yeah. And she probably runs from the golf course up to Red and back again.
No, she's too old for that, no.
We had to go uptown and get her from somebody's house because they took her, yeah. And they were feeding her and treating her well. And that's what the bubble thing is. It was funny, too, because the person said, while I was at the golf course, and the dog was just running around the golf course. Well, we own the golf course. You took it off, it's like me coming to your house and kicking your dog.
Wasn't they, what did they say? Keep the dog off the golf course?
No, they said, the dog was on the golf course, just roaming around on its own. And I was like, we own it.
Oh, that's tight.
The park.
Our yard.
The park.
Somebody said there's something on Boobal about some four-inch-
Oh.
That's what he was talking about, it's Felsh's dog.
On the dog?
It's on the bubble?
Mm-hmm. Oh, well, that day, I phoned you. It sounded to me like the thing was bleeding to death.
It wasn't.
Well, I know, I didn't know that till I went and looked, but-
And I explained to the people, "Look, that dog is so tough. She wanders around, runs around, and when she gets her energy up, she looks as good as, but then she gets, she's like an old person. Sometimes she doesn't have any energy to do anything."
You have a couple of additions to the justice or the union name? A couple of them.
Oh. What did they do with that? Oh, I gotta pay my dog peg, keep you about.
So we can add just under correspondence items, right? Okay. Is everybody here? Anybody? No? You're in their mouths to speak?
Okay.
Pretty good?
I'm not.
Hey, would you mind moving over to that table?
Yeah.
Jerry, we always need you.
You get up to Spokane Street.
Yes.
Oh, a citizen didn't like the plowing.
I just laughed. When I was an acreage-
Yeah.
You didn't get plowed for five days on some side street. You have a foot out of snow, and you walk to the bus because you left your car in your yard, you couldn't get up.
It was just in the Calgary, but never know. Let's go to trail on a snowy day.
Plowing years, unbelievable.
Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Aaron.
It's a pleasure.
Trail's getting a lot better.
Hmm?
Trail's gotten a lot better.
Hmm?
Probably because my son won't work.
Don't quote me on that. Don't send a letter.
Don't go to city, okay?
Whatever. Good, I didn't even use the F word or anything.
We consider ourselves lucky.
Totally. Didn't hit anybody, I could have. Never been so angry in my life. Sure, hey, no harm, no foul.
Jeff, sorry we're taking a bit. We just had a long committee hall meeting, so everybody's just having a bite, so sorry to keep you there a bit, but we'll get to you.
We're weary.
It is, Jeff, right? Yeah.
I'm sure I like this one. It's kind of bright.
Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order. First item on the agenda is public input period. If anyone wishes to address council, at this time, you're a delegation, so you don't have to worry, you're good for now. Please come forward. Don't see anyone, so we'll be right along. Motion to adopt the agenda with two additional information items, one from Adrian Barnes and one from RCAC for a letter of support. So with those two additions on the agenda, all in favor? Opposed? Oh, sorry, Carrie.
Sorry, we can have the second?
Yeah, I moved my wall a second by Fisher. I was laughing because everybody was trying to eat with their hands.
Just put a name down.
Okay, on that, all in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Adoption of minutes, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of December 9/13 be adopted, move by. Councilor Moore, second by Spear. Discussion on those minutes, councilman.
I have one addition to amend my members' report to say that I had asked Councilor Fisher to provide a trails plan, not just a general plan. It was a trails plan for Redstone.
Why, you just want the red trail?
Yeah, yeah.
That's in the minutes, Carrie, you don't have to go crazy anymore. Unless you disagree with it.
No, he already answered it. Said he'd already given it.
Anyway, that's just the minutes, we're not talking about it.
Yeah.
All right, so with that addition on those minutes, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie. Motion that the minutes of the committee hall meeting held the 18th/13 be adopted and that the recommendations within be approved, move by.
Oh, my goodness.
Councilor Wallace, second by. Councilor Moore, I know, but I'd like to see some other hands.
I know. I'm the only one not eating.
I'm in those all in favor. Opposed? Carrie. Motion that the minutes of the committee hall meeting of-
Oh, do we need?
January 6th, what?
Do we need to amend that heritage recommendation?
Do we need two amendments from the January 6th committee of the hall before we adopt?
Okay, so, first of all, a motion to adopt the committee hall meeting of January 6/14, move by. Fisher, second by Wallace. Now, we have two additions or corrections to that, please.
Um, do we wish, the first correction is to the motion that was passed regarding the Columbia Basin Water Smart Match Funding Grant. We just need to add a little bit more detail to that so that it will resolve that the committee hall recommends council and staff applies the Columbia Basin Water Smart Match Funding Grant opportunity to hire water rate consultants via a request for proposed protest to assist the city in developing a long-term water utility structure and that $5,000 be budgeted as a city portion of the matching funds.
Just a small addition. I'll make that.
Well, we already have that, so that's okay. If we approve it, then we approve it. So the other one is-
And the second one was to increase the recommendation regarding the cemetery maintenance to buy 800.
By $800. Okay, with those two, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie. additions and delegations, finally, please come forward, you have our ear, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jeff Janaville. I'm a resident of Lower Roslyn, and I'm here about an issue of electric fences in the city of Roslyn, particularly in the residential areas. The matter appeared in our neighborhood last summer. I contacted the city to see if there are any prohibitions, restrictions on them, and I don't want to speak to the city, but my understanding is that because they are not prohibited, it's that they are a permitted activity. And I think also there's a situation that Wild State PC is promoting them, and that there's support for the program. I don't disagree with the city's position, I think that's a reasonable interpretation. However, I think there are some provisions in the zoning bylaw where contrary interpretation could be achieved. One of them, not really a regulation, but in the residential zoning bylaw, there is intent for development along residential characters. And I'm not really sure that electric fences provide residential character. More specifically, there's a couple provisions in the screening fencing bylaw that defines materials that can be used in fencing, and electricity is not one of them. And also in the screening fencing bylaw, there's a language that says barbed wire, razor And also in the screening fencing bylaw, uh, there's a language that says barbed wire, razor wire, and similar materials are prohibited. Now, I don't necessarily submit that that is, uh, uh, convincing evidence that, that electric fences are not prohibited, but I think what it is, is a, a reasonable argument to be made along those lines, thus the, uh, whether they are permitted in the city seems to be vague, therefore, perhaps a clarification from council is subject to my group of files. Um, the other thing, as I think I failed to mention, I did submit a couple pages to you that are part of the agenda, and pretty much what I have is just a summary of that, but I have also, if you're inclined, talk to some neighboring communities, and how they've addressed the issue, um, and I can provide that also. But the other thing I was gonna, a couple things, another thing I was gonna raise is that I don't know if regulations or restrictions on electric fences would be inconsistent with the policies and objectives in official community plan, sustainability plan, and the wildlife attractant bylaw. I do concede that electric fence is a cost-effective deterrent for, uh, wildlife attractants to, uh, the nuisance associated to, to wildlife, um, in, in the city, but I think that the, the policies and objectives in the sustainability plan, official community plan, on gardens, uh, on, um, uh, orchards in the city can still be, uh, pursued, um, with some reasonable regulations regarding electric fences. In the, um, uh, statements that I provided, I did suggest a couple of options that the city may want to consider if they were to look at, at, uh, some kind of regulations on electric fences. One is a definition, or define whether they are permitted in any zones, and they're permitted in all zones, permitted in no zones, you know, a clarification one way or another. Another recommendation I, I, uh, propose would be that they not be permitted in residential zones. That would still allow them to be in rural zones, agricultural zones, in industrial zones, if that seems appropriate. Another option may be considered, maybe, that, uh, when they're subject to setbacks, and, you know, with, with no regulations in place for them at this point, uh, it appears that they can be put right on property lines, right on parcel lines. Where I live, I think, I don't know if it's unique, I don't think it's uncommon to the city of Roseland, there is no lane, or no alleys. So our rear property line, parcel line, but neighbors' property lines. So electric fences can be put right on the rear parcel line, and in effect, we end up sharing the electric fence, and that may not be our, our intent. Another option that the city could consider would be that electric fence can be permitted either by a zoning amendment, or by a variance application. Therefore, there could be a site-specific, gotta look at each application, or each condition, and whether it merits that, uh, electric fence is warranted, or, or could be justified. And also, maybe some criteria on, on what is allowed on electric fences. I don't know what the voltage that they are, is, I know if, if the deterrent is for bears, which I think likely would be in Roseland, it's a fairly high voltage, you would want to keep them away. And, uh, you know, there would be possibly negative impact, uh, pain, maybe not injury to humans, children, pets, so, um, so I'd, I'd suggest a couple options that the city may consider, and if your staff, if requested, to come up with something else. That's pretty much a summary of what I had put in the proposal that I set forth. Like I mentioned, I did speak to, uh, some of neighboring communities, like to summarize what I found on that, um. I contacted Trail, Castle Guard, Nelson, Grand, Forest, and Preston. None of those communities have any specific restrictions on against electric fences. Trail has restrictions on barbed wire fences, they only be in, uh, industrial areas, and they have to be, uh, two meters, uh,
Above.
Above, yeah. Uh, as I mentioned, none of the other communities have them. Castle Guard advises that some concerns have been raised to them, uh, generated by the Wild State Program of, of promoting electric fences, and Castle Guard is in the process of revising, doing a comprehensive zoning, uh, amendment, and they are considering putting the provision in their zoning bylaw to make them subject to setbacks in residential areas. With that, that's, uh, what I have.
Great, thank you very much, any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that your property is, um, abboted by, by an electric fence? Are you adjacent to an electric fence?
Yeah.
Okay, or nearby, or whatever, if you have a concern. Um, is the reason for the electric fence for, you know, um, particular reasons? Like, do you know it's about gardening, is it about bears, have you had a conversation with?
I have had a conversation with the neighbors, yeah, and, uh, yeah, it is, uh, they have a garden and Madison trees, so it is to deter wildlife.
So it keeps wildlife away from their actual garden?
Right.
Thanks.
Yep, go ahead.
And your concern, though, is mostly about safety. You have, uh, my understanding is that you have, um, it's sitting right on the property line, so you don't have any opportunity to protect your child from that fence unless you put a fence up within your own property.
That would, that would be an option to do that, yeah, and that would, yeah, that would, yeah, that would be one way to do it, the other would be a learning experience. And I think that they, that they would learn, so, yeah, mostly it's about safety things, but also I think that, um, you know, this is specifics to our, my property, but also to the city in general, too, is that, you know, perhaps a, a clear policy or position as far as, as where they should be or should not be, and that, uh, you know, other property owners may be subject to a similar situation. And, you know, I, I think of the, the suggestions that I proposed, one would be that they not be permitted in residential zones. But, but if that, if councilors wisdom thinks that they, if, that may be going too far, you know, subject to a certain setback, then the property owner still gets the benefit of it, and the neighboring property owners are not so much burdened, if that is the correct term, with it, because they're not adjacent to it, and they don't necessarily have to take steps to, uh, either as a safety, or as a deterrent to stay, keep away from it, so.
I think, I, I think you raised some, some great points, and one of my concerns with this whole electric fence thing is, one of my concerns is, uh, if some person decides that he knows how to rig up an electric fence, and goes ahead and rigs it up, and it doesn't meet any safety standards, and kaboom, right? So I, I think at least there shouldn't be inspections of, of the electrical itself, and I mean, right now, I think it's pretty easy to plug one into something. I don't know the voltage, I don't know if it runs on two twenty or one, I don't know, but I think that that's something that we should definitely look at, and the other thing is that we, uh, we regulate how high fences can be, where they can be, right, and we go to great lengths to, uh, ensure that they fit within neighborhoods, and then we allow, uh, chunks of wire to be run, as you say, on property lines or whatever, with no, uh, no oversight on them, and I think that it's important, and I, I look forward to a, a report coming back from staff, and to, to see what we can do, because I, I think you have some very valid concerns. Anybody else? No? No, go ahead.
Just thank you for coming out and giving us, giving this presentation, I think it's a really good example of, you know, that Roseland are seeing an issue, making a point, and then wanting to come to council to bring it to our attention, I really, really appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, and I would also, uh, along those lines, I would suggest the city was very helpful in helping me for the process to come here, and, um, you know, they kind of laid it out, so, thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Jeff, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So we don't need to make a staff recommendation for a report, it'll just come back.
It'll come back, oh, Jeff, we'll get a report back from, from staff and, on your presentation, so, you know, I don't want you to leave here thinking it died, died a slow death, or whatever. We'll get information back from staff and.
Yeah, I figure that, I'll.
And we'll keep you in the loop.
Alright, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item eight, requests arising from correspondence, a request, uh, from the skate park that council approved, the Roseland Skate Park Association's request for a reduction of the, of half of the rental cost of seventy-five dollars, is there a mover to that? I know this is a discussion that's been going a hundred times. I don't see a motion, so I, if I don't see a motion, no, I think, I, I see it declined. I think they, that is already the nonprofit rate, and we've, we've had that discussion a hundred times, and
Yeah.
The nonprofit rate is what it is, and.
That's why we made it.
That's why we made it, okay, so, uh, there is no motion. So it, so the request is denied.
Is it disrespectful not to have a motion, like, I don't think, like, I can make a motion. Okay.
To, a motion to then, to, alright, I'll make a mo- Oh, okay, yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely. Okay, Joe, you wanna do that?
No.
I will, I'll make a motion, but I don't have the request.
Move by, Fisher, seconded by. It must be an election year, moving. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed, Joe?
No.
Oh, in favor, okay. Carrie? Alright. Correspondents, so, sorry, informa-, oh, letter from the Figure Skating Club requesting hot chocolate coupons and city pins. I think that we can handle that as a mover to that. Move by, mover, seconded by Wallace, discussion?
Um, this is a, oh, sorry. I, I have some pins that were left over from the Noram that I'll be bringing back, so they're gonna more than cover this.
I have a box or two myself.
Yeah.
This is a regular request?
No.
No, it's not the first one. First time. They're sponsoring it.
Yeah, this is their first kick at it.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I heard this one advertised, and I thought it was.
Okay, so anyway, on that, motion, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie? Information items, a motion to receive information items.
When are we doing these two extra ones?
Yeah.
That, well, they're gonna be in here right now.
Are they, okay, they're in with the information items, okay, sorry, I just didn't know when they were.
A motion to receive the regulation items listed, and act on them as per the staff recommendations, including.
Uh, Your Worship, the first one, the RCA C letter?
Yeah.
Oh, you're doing the other information items?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can just do that, and then the, the request from, from the RCA is a letter of support.
That's correct.
And the, the other one is to deny a penalty.
Be the recommendation of staff if the motion is to accept the recommendation of staff.
Alright, then, so let's do it the other way around, let's just do nine separately, and then we'll do these other two under information items by themselves, so then we can discuss them separately. Everybody happy with that? Okay, so items nine, A to O, a motion to receive and act on them as per the recommendations, move by. Uh, mover, seconded by Wallace. Uh, discussion, A to O.
I've got E, F, H, and O.
Carrie? I'll come back.
No, I was gonna, I've got, I just went on.
Okay. Councilmore, move it.
No, I don't think I do.
Councilwallace. Council Spearon.
N.
N?
N, oh, yeah, I, oh.
Yeah, N's fine.
L, M, M, yeah.
Okay, E, Council.
Um, okay, well, really, this is sort of E and F together, this is the Bergleman engagement letter. Um, first of all, did we pass a motion to renew the engagement already? I kind of thought we had, did we? Refresh my record.
I thought we, for, for Berg, to do, to do the audit?
Yeah, I believe that we, I, I have to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I thought we had, which is fine, right, I'm happy, happy to do it again, but I, I just found this, uh, their letter very interesting, and it would have been, um, good to have that, you know, before we did the re-engagement, but I don't have a problem with it, it would have renewed them anyway. But I thought it was very interesting this time that they went into so much more, uh, depth than in the last letters that we've gotten, and I figured that was probably due to the AGLG stuff. Um, I think that there's a couple of things that they're talking about in here, um, that were, where it seemed like maybe they didn't get enough information last time, and get that sense sort of going through here, whether there's more information that they're going to want to be getting from us this year, is that what we're getting?
I, I don't know.
And they're, the letter's so much more detailed.
But I think we're already on, on a good path to supply them with the information they're gonna need to do.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna deny them information.
No, I know we're not, but it just, because this letter's so much more detailed, it seems like they're asking for more than they have in the past.
I think.
It could be a lot of things.
Okay, probably not just the lateness, right?
No, no, but I mean, that's.
Um, okay, and then I had a couple of things that, um, when I'm looking over this, I'm thinking about the, um, recommendations that the municipal auditor made to us last year, and there were sixteen particular recommendations that they made, and I'm hoping that staff will come forward with a, with a plan of which of those they plan on implementing, and how they're going to do it, because we've never, I mean, we should, I suppose, wait, before we do that, we should probably discuss those, because we never have. You know, they sent that letter, and it had those sixteen recommendations, and we never talked about it, and I'd like to talk about it, and I'd like staff's input on which ones they think they can feasibly do, and, and all of that, so I think that's
Okay, that's kinda, okay, I, I, yeah, I agree it's important, but I think it's kind of outside of this right now, but I, I think, no, no, but I think you can bring it forward, and we can get to it, but I think, right now, we're, you know, dealing with the, with the specific item.
We are, but their specific engagement letter, it's like they're, you know, they're, part of their thing is they make recommendations to us, and then
Yep, no, no, I understand that.
We need to keep, we need to do something with those.
But that is, go ahead.
Um, Your Worship, to the council, I would just ask that if council wishes us to spend the time to come back to you with a report on that letter, I would like a recommendation, just so that we are very clear of how staff time is.
I, I totally agree, but I think we can do that outside of this, because this, this is pretty specific right now.
Well, yeah, this is, but when would that come up, right? I mean, should I do that in members' report, ask for a, a report on when we're gonna see a plan to implement the recommendations? Okay, I'll do it in members' reports, then. Okay.
Because I mean, if we're not, if we're not altering or, or having anything specific about these information items themselves, you know, we spend a lot of time, sometimes, going through them, just to, just to read them out loud.
Well, one of, one of the things is, tell me if this, tell me if this is inappropriate for this point, but, um, when we read this letter from them, they say they're not required to determine if relevant controls are operating effectively, and I'm wondering if we could ask them to actually give us the cost, what it would cost for them to tell us whether our controls are actually efficient and effective. They say they're, they don't do an in-depth thing enough to tell us.
Right, so that definitely, that definitely would require a motion, because it's gonna require money, for sure, I, and I wonder, I think we might get some in-depth information pretty quickly from the AGLG, which, uh, we haven't really had to pay extra money for.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to comment on that, because that's what I was gonna, with this audit letter, is that in co-, in signing an agreement, accepting their review, their engagement letter, there are some recommendations that were made last year through a letter that was given that we didn't implement, that we need to implement. Um, and so we, I think we need to do that sooner than later, and then the other part of that is, is that, um, I know that we have to start this process, but we're gonna be reading this letter from, uh, the AGLG, we have a discussion with these guys, saying that there are some additional things that we might want to add, based on the, the other information that's coming down the pike, so, so that it's an immediate response to, um, the AGLG, saying, look, if we put this pol-, this procedure in place, responding directly to point one, C, D, whatever, um, and it's in our, it's, it's part of our audit instructions to our auditors now, going forward. And that would reassure the councillors, community mayors, staff, everyone, that we're reacting to what the AGLG says, but also using the opportunity, um, to do it right away, starting with this letter. You know what I mean? So as a response to them, so I'd make the recommendation that, um, that we would, um, you know, accept, because we're, we're just, uh, receiving this stuff, accept this letter as is, but, write a letter to them saying that during the course of the audit with AGLG, there will be recommendations forthcoming, and we may instruct you to, to additional things.
Sure, I think that's, that's a good one.
Yeah. To finish my comment on that, if I might, on, they talk about audit materiality, and they talk about the size, complexity, growth of the city, changes within the organization, concerns expressed by management, and I was gonna add, concerns expressed by the AGLG's reports, and concerns expressed by council should also be considered material to their, to their audit, that would be something I'd like to communicate to them. And that's along the same lines.
Along the same lines, but it's just a little bit different.
Well, yeah, I mean, putting it into a slot that they had in their, in their, uh, report.
Well, so I think, yeah, we did, Councilmore.
That, can I speak, just a one little hair longer to it? Uh, the other, um, issue around, not, the other issue, just to your point, uh, Councilmore, regarding the auditors not getting enough information at the time that they were here the last time, or that this letter somehow intimated that they did. When I read it, I didn't get that same sense, I, what I got the sense of is that they know that we've been audited, so they're pulling out all the stops on their letter to cover their, um, to cover themselves, which I think is great. The other issue is, is that, um, nowhere at any time when I was part of any audit group did we ever not get what we asked for.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We, if we, if we asked for something, and they didn't give it to us, we'd put it in the report and say, we asked for this and didn't get it. So we didn't see that, so I would assume then, that the auditors did, fully got everything that they asked for, and didn't ask for anything else, because they didn't put it in the report. We, if we, if we asked for something and they didn't give it to us, we'd put it in the report and say, we asked for this and didn't get it, so we didn't see that, so I would assume then, that the auditors did, fully got everything that they asked for, and didn't ask for anything else, 'cause they didn't put it in the report saying they didn't get it, and there were other recommendations that we had in there, um, that were very specific, so I would've seen, we would've seen that in a letter, so I'm quite confident in, in the way that they connected themselves last time, and I think it's just doing a cover-up, a cover, cover your behind.
Don't say cover-up.
Auditorium cover-up is not easy.
No, I didn't say that, where's the video? I did not mean that.
Oh, we understand that, okay, so are we all clear on the recommenda, or on the motion, Fred, okay, on that motion, all in favor? Both is carried, so that motion is in, is outside of the information items, so that, so that's E and F, we both good, that was both E and F, I think?
Yeah.
H was...
Let's see, H, so that was me, um, oh, okay, on the, the honorariums, um, remind me, was that five hundred, is that included in their budget, or is this an extra five hundred dollars for the honorarium?
No, they had money in there.
They had it in there, okay, fine.
Uh, N, is that all, Counselor?
Yeah, that was it.
N, Counselor Spear.
Well, yeah, that, that's the NOL, um, annual report, um, I just wanted to mention that, and I, you know, I, I see it in our planning, um, binder, that to move that fifteen thousand dollars forward for the NOL, but in fact, and the NOL is dissolving, um, as far as the committee goes, um, and I would appreciate if we could make sure that for our next committee, the whole meeting, that we have the other requests from the seven summits.
We have it.
But on, can, maybe can we get an upgrade, a, a grade of that chart for our next meeting, or sent out to council, could it allow us to do that, you think? Just so we've got those numbers.
Which chart? Which chart? The spreadsheet thing?
Yeah, yeah, because some of them aren't on there, because they, like, that's not on there.
Yeah, well, well, I didn't...
Is it on there?
We can update that echo.
Yeah, just if you could update that.
Well, NOL, NOL's on there, I mean...
Yeah, but in NOL, it's, it's different now, so it's taking a different form, and I just...
Well, that's a whole different, that's a whole different discussion than if, if this is an NOL.
No, no, all, no, I'm separating the two things out, I'm just saying that this is dissolving, and that there is a request from the seven summits, learning center, yeah, for the coordinator, yeah.
From another group. From another group. For another group.
Um, I just wondered if, uh, the city wanted to send a thank you letter to Erin Guy, or to...
I think, uh, we can do that, for sure.
Appreciate the work that the NOL committee did.
So is the NOL?
I mean, I shouldn't be, I'm on the committee, but I just think it's important that we recognize those groups as they dissolve, as all...
No, but I... So, are they done?
Well, she told me formally that we had, we are done, and, um...
Formally, okay, so we'll do that, right away.
But I, I will make sure that I, before you do that, Tracy, I'll just, um, verify that, but...
She did a great job, really good, that girl did a great job.
Yeah, she did. Yeah, I'll send her an email, yeah.
Okay, so that's...
Can I just clarify, that's for the whole group, that's for the whole group of volunteers, not just the manag, managing?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, to the NOL committee, but it would go to Erin, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, oh, that's all you.
I had, oh, Tourism Roslin, um, I just was really impressed with the results that they showed, I'm really happy to see the shuttle's such a huge success, one hundred and thirty-seven people a day is a lot, and I like the fact that she got her, her carbon offset numbers in there, too, I think she gets a lot, a lot done, and I also wanted to say, I really liked the new splash page, and I'm wondering, did we ever approve that, did that ever, and do other people like it?
Splash page, for whom?
Uh, it's the, it's got a picture of Roslin, and it's the city, and the Tourism Roslin, the chamber, and the, and...
I haven't seen it.
There's a link, it's a link, follow the link in your, uh...
That's splash page test version here?
Oh, because I, we haven't approved that.
Page one forty-one.
Well, I think it is, I mean, yeah, it was just in there, in their minutes, right, in Tourism Roslin minutes, but I was just gonna say, I really liked it, so...
Oh, I haven't seen it, so I can't comment.
Okay, well, you could follow the link, and then you can see it, I thought it looked quite nice, um, and that, that was it, that was it.
I, I just, I, I just wanna comment on the, the carbon offsets, I find that some, how very confusing, how, uh, older bus can drive around empty half of the day, and still be more carbon friendly than a up-to-date car with two people in it, to me, it...
No, 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 because it's all the different cars, you're saving seventy cars if you've got two people, right, seventy cars.
Yeah, but do seventy, do seventy cars put out the same emissions as that older bus? I just don't know how you come up with those numbers, to me, they're just numbers, they don't mean a whole bunch to me.
It will be interesting to ask if there's a formula, because there's fifty to seventy cars that are...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, I mean, have you, anybody driven behind the bus?
No, you gotta go on the bus.
Yeah, don't drive behind it.
Anyway, I don't wanna beat that up, I just, just for, for...
Oh, and I want to.
Yeah, on, on that one.
On, no, go, Tourism, on Tourism Roslin.
Yeah, well, that's for Joey's, too, I would imagine, yeah.
Tourism Roslin, yes, sir.
You.
Okay, so, it's not one hundred and thirty-seven people, though, right, so I think maybe that's where some of the accuracy's kinda getting a bit foggy, is, um, it's not one hundred and thirty-seven people that are taking the buses, it's one hundred and thirty-seven passengers or riders or, or...
Oh, those not people, dogs, are we taking dogs on the bus?
Yeah, but there's not one hundred and thirty-seven people, right, it's, it's...
One hundred and seventy riders.
It's like a unit?
Rides.
Yeah, it means...
It's a ride.
One person can ride twice.
It means that likely there's, you know, one person taking it twice, generally, you think, or one person taking it several times, you're using it multiple times, right, so, to say that it's that many people, and then it would be that many drives, or, you know, anyway, that, that's part of the confusion, I think, is because it's not actually many people, you would never refer to it that way normally, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's okay. Sure, go on, right, but it's more, yeah.
That's part of the confusion, I think, is because it's not actually many people, you would never refer to it that way normally, right?
Come on, remind me, I'll pet it. Okay, so if it's rides, it's still, it's still rides that aren't driving cars out there, somebody's riding the bus now.
But not one hundred and thirty-seven individuals, one hundred and thirty-seven fares.
This is for debate, this is for debate. True, fares, which is a great one, too, anyway, I wanna end, I wanna end up with Jill on this one.
Commute. Well, I just wanted to kinda comment, and this goes back to actually our committee, the whole conversation around the Sustainability Commission, actually, and, you know, kind, kind of some of the comments about the arms length of the Sustainability Commission, whereas Tourism Roslin operates very similarly in many ways, that there's things and decisions that they make, that, yes, we have to approve them, but sometimes the sentiment is that, you know, they've gone ahead and done things on their own without council approval, so, I just, you know, there's not, you know, it's not just the Sustainability Commission that tries to operate somewhat independently of council and make decisions on behalf of, of us, and I, you know, I kinda, I don't think that's really a bad thing, right, I mean, if it's something that we're totally opposed to, but, um, yeah, so I just, I, you know, I was making that connection, actually, as Joey was talking about the Sustainability Commission earlier, but I didn't wanna speak to it at that time. So, anyway, Tourism Roslin, same thing, like you said, oh, what splash page, and have we approved it, and, and you do that on many things with Tourism Roslin, or a number of things, so I just, and I don't mean that, like negatively, I'm just saying that, you know, that, you know, they are gonna operate that way as a group of very competent people, or...
In a separate society.
Yeah, in separate society.
Yes, and I, I have to, I have to, I have to comment, I know.
And the other thing about Tourism Roslin is the voting thing which you changed, what, what, that got changed about the voting thing, but with the Sustainability Commission, for example, there's no, there was never any conflict with, um, city representatives, council representatives, because we're not, like, we're not like the directors, or whatever the system is with Tourism Roslin.
But Jill, if you are, it doesn't matter who, if you were a council sitting in a meeting, and you're approving a budget at one meeting, you can't come in here and be, uh, not biased.
I don't vote, though.
No, I don't, but that was the whole point of that.
No, 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 I understand that, I got that.
We used to, absolutely.
But you used to, so, you know, that was, it, it's a different, um, it's a different structure.
But we... I mean... Miss, the executive director sent me a le, an email, saying that she got an opinion on us councils sitting on that board, we already had a very good idea that we couldn't vote on money, but when we got that opinion, I had to, I had to get, I had to get my, our own opinion, because it was pretty much forced on me, on us, right? Because if that information is true, and I, we don't act on it, you know, we're not doing our, our duty here, so, that's why, and, yeah.
No, and I'm not, I'm not even, that's, you know, my comment, no, no, it's just more about that that structure also operate, you know, the Sustainability Commission, the Tourism Roslin Board, they operate in different ways, some of those groups, than a task force, right, so, they're, they're not the same and not really comparable, it's kinda like apples and oranges, in some way, that's all I need to say.
Okay, good, so, on their recommendations, all in favor? I didn't mean that badly, opposed, it's carried, thank you, uh, moving right along to the other ones, to whom it may concern, is everyone aware of the Mr. Barnes's request?
Not gonna understand it, 'cause I don't have an...
Okay, I'll give it the short version, uh, he was charged late fees of twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents on this utility bill, perhaps Tracy could give us the short version easier than me.
Okay, um, Mr. Barnes made a payment, uh, electronic fund transfer through his bank to pay a utility account, and, um, it went on through the wrong account, because he didn't, on his side, change his banking information at the credit union, um, so when he became aware of that, he came in to pay, and was told that there's twenty-one eighty-seven dollars, um, late penalty fee, and he didn't feel that was fair, um, so he has come to council, we don't normally bring something with my new to council, but we do need, um, some sort of, the precedent setting when it comes to an interest charge, it was not the city's fault that he was late, um, it was him not changing his banking information at the bank.
That's right.
And a lot of people pay different amounts on the utility bills, because some people will be going away with a large amount on, or, you know, so, it's pretty difficult for staff to make any judgment calls on someone pays this much money to this account, we don't question that.
Okay.
That's not the way I interpreted it, and it says, it says clearly that he moved, and the account, the account at the city changed, where his money was paid.
Yeah, the account of the city changed, but he didn't change his account, when you, he pays his, his bills via the credit union's website, so he would have to go in and change his account information on the credit union's website.
I don't, and I, I see that, and I don't see this as precedent setting in any way, I just, this doesn't, I mean, I would, I would vote in favor of giving the twenty dollar fee and get on with it.
Take the motion, I'll say it.
I just take that motion.
Second or, okay, any further discussion?
Well, can I just get clarity here, so, was there some change on the city side, though?
There's nothing we could do.
No, was there a change on the city side?
He moved, he moved.
He got a new account with the city.
He got a new number.
What he's saying is, when he paid it at the credit union click, the account number that was there, not, wasn't his account number, but it was his bank account number, but it was his city number that he didn't change.
So, did it go to his old address?
Yes.
It got paid to his old address.
Oh, okay, I understand, okay, thank you, I was going, what does that moving have to go, do with it, okay.
Enjoy it, yeah.
Okay, now, wait a minute, it's still not the city's fault that it happened, though, right, and it's not like, I mean, I, whether it's his fault or not, or whether he should've known that his account changed when he moved, because the utility account changed when he moved, you know, whether he should've known that or not, it doesn't even matter, because ultimately, we're talking about taxpayer money, you know, the city's money, and if it should be paid out, because it's something that's not the city's fault, I mean, I just, it's such a small amount, it just doesn't matter, and we did actually come across something like this, that was somewhat similar to this not very long ago, and we did deny, deny the request, and I can't remember, that one might've been twenty-ish, or maybe it was eighty-ish dollars, I can't remember what, but it was a similar type of idea, it was something about an online payment through a bank, not working because of, it wasn't actually, it was a late payment, but it shouldn't have been, it was like, it, it was similar, in that the person made an honest mistake, it wasn't their fault, but it was an honest mistake, but it certainly wasn't the city's fault, so, I'm, I'm against it, I think we should, it's, yeah. Right. You know, whether he should've known that or not, it doesn't even matter, because ultimately, we're talking about taxpayer money, you know, the city's money, and if it should be paid out, because it's something that's not the city's fault, I mean, I just, it's such a small amount, it just doesn't matter, and we did actually come across something like this, that was somewhat similar to this not very long ago, and we did deny, deny the request, and I can't remember, that one might've been twenty-ish, or maybe it was eighty-ish dollars, I can't remember what, but it was a similar type of idea, it was something about an online payment through a bank, not working because of, it wasn't actually, it was a late payment, but it shouldn't have been, it was like, it, it was similar, in that the person made an honest mistake, it wasn't their fault, but it was an honest mistake, but it certainly wasn't the city's fault, so, I'm, I'm against it, I think we should, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak against it, I'm gonna speak against it, too, because we've denied quite a few requests where they were, uh, innocent, innocent, uh, happenings when they come of, on the part of citizens, and we said basically, sorry, that's the way it is, and to me, that's the way it is.
Basically, those other situations, as I recall, they were people who were late, who said, I would, I couldn't, I couldn't make an online payment, 'cause I was out of the country, or I was, they had an excuse for being late, but they were actually late, he wasn't actually late, his mistake was not when he pulled down a, a City Roslin Utilities, and I don't even know, was that on the credit union, has it pulled down on the city, or was it...
Yeah. Online.
No, it's paid, yeah, it's got a paid note.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I don't wanna beat this up for twenty bucks, but, I don't know.
Here's an example, so, if I'm going online, and I'm paying on one of my credit cards, and I get the wrong account number, and I put, and I paid MasterCard instead of Visa, they don't care. Well, I'm not kidding.
I guarantee you this, and I'll speak to that, if it was a MasterCard to a MasterCard, if you had two, and you paid one, and it, it didn't get applied, and you complained, they would waive it.
They absolutely would.
They would, 'cause it's a customer service thing.
Customer service, right.
Anyway, I...
They paid on time, paid on time and paid the city, right, paid, it went into the city, the city has not out any money on this at all, right?
There you go, call the question.
Call the question.
Well, Jill hasn't spoken, and Joey wants to speak again, I mean, I, I don't wanna get out of...
So, what, what did that actual twenty-one dollars eighty-seven cents get applied to, then, his...
Old account.
His old account?
Late fee.
Yeah, but the, the city got the money, right, but it went to his...
He hasn't paid the late fee.
Oh.
This is just the late fee, paid the bill.
Oh, this is the late fee, but he paid the bill, so did it get charged to the right account eventually?
Yeah, eventually.
Oh, is it just the late?
But he was late in paying his bills.
But he wasn't late in paying the bill, he just, he was on time, but he paid the wrong account.
Oh, well, I got another example, I just got nailed for a whole bunch, and they, we didn't have any sympathy, too bad, wrong number, too bad, that's what they said to me.
All right, I'm gonna call the question, and, and the motion is to waive the fee, so on that, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated.
It's gonna be all over the telegraph, but there you go.
Okay, the other one is a, a letter of support for the Roslin, I don't know, I wanted to say the whole word, Roslin Council Arts and Culture, uh, looking for support in principle to an innovative project that aims to integrate arts and culture with the outdoors lifestyles in the community, this is part of random acts of culture the RCA C has had on the agenda for a while, it had on the agenda for a while, the aim of this project would be to bring art that is environmentally suitable, suitable for our trail system, and that would expose people who would not necessarily view art in more traditional environments to art in an outdoor environment, it would be, what, I'm reading, oh, does everybody go, what?
What are you, what are you asking?
All right, they, they want, they just want, support in principle, moved by...
For grants, so they can apply to the...
So they can apply for grant, moved by, moved second by Fisher, any further discussion, or do you want me to keep...
So they're gonna put some metal birds outside where we're gonna, where the birds?
No, your worship, I'm speaking with, um, Bernice, they're looking at maybe like a wood carving out on the Centennial Trail, or on city property, um, so some kinda form of art, or a rock carving, or something, so that when bikers are going along the trail, they see this piece of art and go, oh, cool.
And fall on it.
Maybe we can get...
I love the random acts of culture that they did on the fencing during the Columbine Outfall.
Maybe we can get some maintenance money as well, anyway.
Oh, yeah, don't have...
Okay, uh, motion to provide a letter in principle, moved by Wallace, seconded by Spear, any further discussion?
We already mo, moved it, seconded it, we're here.
Yeah, it's already done.
Did it, oh, sorry.
I'm just voting.
Sort of voting.
No, I didn't, I didn't remember that we did that, 'cause I was too busy reading. Okay, on the motion, all in favor? Opposed, carried, bylaws, Neil, members' reports, we'll start with, uh, yes, start right there with a notice of motion.
Oh, my notice of motion, okay, I think my notice of motion.
What are you committing, for your appointments?
Are you guys in there?
Oh, where the hell did that?
What are we doing?
Number eleven.
Oh, no, but I'll, I'll go to the no, the motion first, because the other one's gonna... Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, okay, I think that this is something that we've been missing for a while, and that we need, and I don't really, I mean, it, to me, to me, it doesn't need any more, uh, information, I'm stunned that it's taken as long as it has for us to get what is a basic, basic project management, when you start a project, you get a budget, you get the changes you make to it, you get what you spent on it, and you, you know, top to bottom, you know, we've gotten a number of different reports with all different dollar amounts, and so I would like to make a formal request that we get that report, and that report would probably answer all of those other questions that I have in the, in the letter, because that was, the question that I had in the letter was a response to the last report that we got on this.
Okay, I didn't get a second, or, but you don't get to speak now, once I get a second, or, second, Counselor Spear, all right, further discussion, Counselor Spear?
No, I don't disagree, I think, you know, that it, it would be nice to have the, some, some more definitive numbers, and, I mean, yeah, I think it's important for us to, to know exactly what it costs us, and more so to the community.
Kate, does anyone... Does anyone wanna put a timeframe on this, because otherwise, then we'll have to shift things, if we wanted immediately, we'll have to shift, or whatever.
I think, I have a comment, oh, that's relevant to the motion.
Good.
It's, um, that the, the, uh, the way that the motion reads, though, doesn't really speak to the actual project itself, because the issue is, in, and I'm not speaking for Counselor Moore, but I think what she's meaning is, is that the project itself, the scope of the project is defined in, um, what... the project itself, the scope of the project is defined in, um, what I S L's scope was specific to the Columbia project, right? What engineer it costs, what the pipes will cost, all that kinda stuff. That's the scope. So that's the project. So that's what's been provided to us already. I think what Counselor Moore is looking for was all the pre-work of the project. Because to me, those two things have to be separated. You have an assessment period, you have the way that the I S L prepared the tendered documents and all that. They're not part of the actual project, because that's a project in itself. They're pre-project work. And so if you're looking for something, I think the motion has to change, then you're looking for a timeline. You need a specific timeline of when did the first council say that Columbia was, I'm serious, though.
I know, but I just.
But when was the, when did the first council give direction to the sta, to staff? And then staff went out and talked to a engineer or tendered it to, I don't even know, I can't, I wasn't here.
What RFQ?
An RFQ, what that cost, that's in that. If that's what you're looking for, you need to, I think you need to change your motion to include all that stuff, because that project is just Columbia, Washington, and the engineering and the work that was done in that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying. Can I speak to that? I see what you're saying, and I guess my definition of project is, because you look at page seventy, where if they suggested categories, it's, you'd start with the feasibility reports, what did they cost?
Page seventy?
Page one seventy, phase one engineering, final engineering, contract administration, construction budget, change orders, in-house contributions, street furnishings, finance charges, non-revated taxes. That, to me, covers the whole thing. Covers from when we first said we were gonna do it to when we finished it. And that's, and that is what I'm asking for.
Well, you didn't really say, and I would, I would disagree with you, because nobody said we were gonna do the project. The first project was a feasibility survey, an RFQ. That was a project to see, would you do it? And then the next phase was, would you do this part? And then the next phase is, yes, we're approving the project. Do you know what I mean?
I guess what I'm trying to get here, and this is for the community, for our benefit, because we're accountable to the community for how we spend the taxpayers' funds, is, and, and to the community, is a full report of, of what this project cost us, basically, start to finish, right? Which is the feasibility stuff to the conclusion.
And I don't disagree, but as a counselor that approved the project, I approved the project. The feasibility work or the RFQ was approved by a different council.
Right.
And it's continuing, but that's the way the information has to be presented, because what could happen is, this is what, you get one report and it says, this is what the project costs, then you can say, oh, well, you're a million dollars over budget. No, because when I, I approved, I approved this part of it.
That's right, but that's where the changes come in, right? Because what was approved originally, and then any changes that were there, those would show, right? And then you say what was actually.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is that, that in the feasibility part of it, was there, did a council sit down and say, at the time of feasibility, we're approving it at six point eight million dollars? Did they? Because if they did, then it didn't get carried forward to this council. We were asked, here's the budget, approve this budget, not all that other stuff.
Yeah, 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 but that's all right, because you're looking, you're looking at.
It's the way you present it, though. That's the question.
Well, I'm fine to have anyone present the info, all I want, all I want.
Is all the information.
Is the information, so we can go to the public and say, this is what we thought it was gonna cost, this is what it cost. I don't really care about who approved what, when. That's not the, that's not the key point.
I do, though.
Well.
The timelines are really important.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just looking for clarity on the motion, that's all, because we're voting on a motion. And I'm looking for clarity, because that whole timeline is not the project. The project was RFQ, this, this, and this.
But from the community's point of view, but from the, from the taxpayers' point of view, it is the project.
Yes, but it's how it's presented to them.
Well, great, yeah, that's true. I mean, I, I'm not as concerned as how it's presented, I just want it to be present, I mean, concerned in how it's presented, that it's accurate. Whatever format staff wants to come up to to do it is fine. I just wanna be able to go to the public and say, this is really what it cost. We've had two pretty divergent numbers there on it, and I just want clarity on it. That's what I'm trying to get at. You know, and I'd be fine to have staff come back and say, okay, well, given we can get this sort of mess that I've put together here over a number of weeks, and they'll come back, I'm sure Lois would come back with a great report, because she's got access to all the information and she could put it together. I would trust her to, to do that. I just feel we need to do it. We haven't done it, and we need to do it.
Henceback to my timeframe. I mean, you have one person doing three jobs, and no doubt she, she would be excellent at it, but, you know, we're, we are where we are, and.
But don't you think the Auditor General wants to know this kind of, that we can at least communicate to the community, the biggest infrastructure project we've done in the community?
Of course, of course. So if council wishes to make it a priority, we can do that, that's all. Or if we, if we wanna wait till we have a preliminary budget, whatever, I, it, it doesn't matter. But I mean, we have to realize the resources that we have. That's my only point, not that we shouldn't do it.
As far as timeframe goes, you know, we can make the request as long as we don't have an expectation that it's going to show up next week.
Oh, I don't.
And just allow the staff to fit it in when they have the time to fit it in.
That's a good one, too. Anyway, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm all for getting all this out here, I'm all for that. I, I don't have, I think that's great. Let's do it.
Yeah, I was, I was just an accent, that, you know, I mean, as far as the, you know, the previous councils, I mean, that information is there. I mean, staff, you know, the, although the Auditor General did say that we were missing many things, so who knows what.
I think we gotta be careful about speaking with the Auditor General.
Anyway, um, so I think we all prob, I hope we're all on the same page with wanting, wanting the clarification around that. I think, you know, how that comes, as Counselor Moore said, is not so much about the format, but that we just get that information and, you know, maybe work backwards on that list or something, or I don't know how staff wants to do it. But it has to be reasonably, reasonable timeframe, and yes, you know, we constantly say that we're, you know, we're short of staff, et cetera, et cetera. So that needs to be addressed, and I know that that will come once we get the report back as well.
I, I mean, within that thing, I'd just make the recommendation to, to Lois and ask her when it would be reasonable.
That's fine.
And then we can live with what's reasonable for her.
Okay, but we can just, we can just proceed with this motion, and then we'll get that to come back to us. How's that?
And, and you know, the other thing that I would say about this, because I, I have done this over a period of time, and I know it's a bit of a dog's breakfast, right? And I would be perfectly happy if Lois had any questions about what the intention was there to sort it out with her, right? You know, if it's not clear to her, but I think it will be very clear to her as a new person.
And I think, yeah, so we'll, we'll call a question on this motion, and then we'll leave it up to staff to figure out.
Okay, and I'm fine with asking Lois to come back to us with a timeline, when she could do it, not asking for impossible things.
Well, counsel, that's counsel's decision. Okay, so on the recommend, on the motion.
Time is here.
On the motion, all in favor. Voice is carried, thank you.
Excuse me.
And, yeah, I guess we could go to.
Anybody?
No, we can keep going with members' reports, Counselor Moore.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to things I had about the auditor. I would like to make a motion, and again, this can be a loose timeframe, a, a motion that staff bring a plan to implement the recommendation made by the municipal auditor for twenty twelve. But maybe that's not the right motion. Maybe it should really be that we have a discussion of those, have a discussion with staff of those recommendations. Because there was, there were sixteen recommendations that the auditor, the municipal auditor, made to us that we haven't discussed. So maybe the first thing is for us to discuss them with staff.
But perhaps some of them are already been accomplished.
Yeah, maybe.
Your worship, I would prefer if that was done at a, like, committee, the whole meeting, where we could have some frank talk between Lois and counsel. Because she has addressed some of those things, and some of those things have changed, but I would like her to explain.
Okay.
Why she wants to change those things.
Okay, so I'll rephrase my motion to be that we have a C O W to talk with staff about the recommendations the municipal auditor made for twenty twelve.
May the whole meeting, you said? Okay, second or? Fisher, further? All in favor? Opposed, carried?
Okay, and, okay, I think I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Fisher?
I'm okay.
Counselor, move it.
Okay, so broadly, um, this week, oh, this is a question. Um, this week, we should be finding out all kinds of exciting things. Um, the contract, or the, the first draft that we get to see of the contract will be coming to us by the end of the week. Um, and so that's the indefeasable right of use agreement, and, um, that is something that we'll need to deal with, so, um, fairly quickly, I guess, because the other bit of news that we'll be getting is hopefully, um, exactly when they can start construction, and on their side of things, it sounds like they're, all of a sudden, gonna be able to do it quite quickly. I mean, start quite quickly, quickly. The D S G, the design, construction guys, um, are coming up this week to set things out. Um, the Ford is poles already in, grown ago.
They're already wired, yeah.
And, um, basically, you know, a possible limitation is frozen ground, but they think they can get around that, although that would increase the cost. So another thing we're finding out this week, um, updated numbers. So we'll see what those look like. And so basically, everything's happening at once. That kind of does need to fall in a timeline, so we'll see what order we get the information we need in order to say, okay, or not, so that they can start the construction, that they're saying they're pretty much at point of being able to start right now.
I wonder about the cost of the frozen ground issue, if that's gonna be something major.
That's the thing, is we're, we're getting the numbers this week, I mean, yeah.
It's not, it's not a significant amount of underground.
That would, no.
It's mostly them.
And chances are, because this splicer machine that generally just makes like the small.
Trench, yeah.
Trench in the ground, that, um, generally wouldn't matter if it's frozen ground. It's really more just the digging up for the, the unit, basically, that's gonna house everything just outside of this, um, building that would really be affected. So it's a small amount of ground, likely. Um, but there are other numbers that are coming to us finalized soon, right? So we don't know if it's going to deviate much from original numbers, like, we just don't know until we see.
Good.
Um, also, I wanted to point out a bit of the news item that chances are you're very quick. Um, so Nelson got their all wheel park paid for, four hundred and fifty grand price tag, and, um, they got it.
For their what?
Their all wheel park.
All wheel park.
Which is like skate park, skate park.
All wheel park, he called it.
Literally correct, skate park.
And so how about that money? Um, it says here, Mayor Dooley was quick to thank the province of B C for its four hundred grand community recreation grant and the Columbia Basin Trust for an additional fifty thousand dollars. And then they got a lot of, you know, in-kind sweat equity, and you know, it was a lot of sweat equity, but in-kind donations from various people in the community and various corporations. So that's finally coming together. So it does, um, it does happen.
We can hear about provincial rec grant this year, too.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It sounds like it's a rink from a couple of years ago.
No, it was the, it was when we applied for the twelve month pool thing. That's the last rec grant I heard about, because that's two years ago. We missed one.
If we missed it, we missed it. We can't go back and get it. Anything else? I don't know.
Maybe it's a different grant stream or something.
Joey, anything further?
Um, no.
Counselor Spear.
Um, well, I have a few things down here, but I, I guess the only one, oh, well, the Sustainability Commission's coming up this week. Um, when I was looking at the library budget, I'm not sure if you guys recall, that there was always some federal money in there for a number of years, and then that just dried up on that line item. So, you know, I don't know, for some reason, I keep thinking about resolutions for the A K B L G, and I just wondered if I, you know, I mean, we're always tasked, you know, the downloading thing, right? The downloading syndrome. And I, I guess I just think that, um, well, particularly in light of the Harper government and what they've been doing with, uh, some of the burning of the research materials, but, um, if you guys have been reading about. Um, I just wonder if we should be putting an A K B L G motion forth for, you know, to encourage federal funding for, for libraries or some of those funding areas that they used to fund that they're not funding anymore. Anyway, that's one thing I've got written down. I will deal with that myself, or look into it more, and, because, you know, it's just that downloading, right? I mean, you know, but the library's always costing us more, it's always asking us for more money, and, and, you know, it's, it, it seems to be a symptom of the lack of funding, whether it's provincial or federal. So anyway, I've got that down. I just made a comment about the Free Ride Shuttle, that it seemed like the numbers were positive for December despite the snow conditions, and that, I think there's forty five businesses, stakeholders, that are involved with that, as well as the city, but I think it was forty five businesses. So that's quite a number, right? Of stakeholders, was it more than that?
No, I think that's the businesses, it's not the city that, you know.
No, no, but it is.
No, 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 I know, but the stakeholders are the businesses that have paid.
It's in the, it, it's in the, uh, report from Terrence Rock, yeah, somewhere.
Anyway. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I thought that that was, you know, I mean, because people, I have heard lots of positive comments, but I also have had the question about, you know, should they, you know, be charging, you know, it was that conversation we had with Councilor Tooney or Leeny, so. It will be interesting just to see, once it plays itself out this year, if the, if the snow conditions become a little bit more positive, as they are of late. Um, no, I think that's, I have one more thing, but I don't have to come back to, because I don't have it written down, so I'll stop there.
Okay, you done?
Yeah.
Counselor Wall.
Okay, um, I had a sewerage meeting last week, and, uh, um, with the change in apportionment, Roslin will be paying fifty six thousand more than previous. Um, the new budget includes three million dollars for the services contribution towards the pipe bridge. The pipe bridge was originally estimated for the sewer services portion, um, between one point nine and two point one million. That's now being estimated between three and four million.
We weren't gonna contribute to that.
So there was.
No, no, just, just the pipe bridge, not, not the foot part of it.
Yeah, just, just, just for what it would take to have the pipe bridge built, not for all of the extra that the City of Trail is putting onto it. We have, we have three different consultants involved in the project. There's Dayton and Knight, who have been engineers for the sewer service forever. There's Buckland and Taylor, who are working for the City of Trail with the design. S N C Lavelin is jumping in to oversee Buckland and Taylor for the regional district. It's becoming, uh, somewhat frightening, and, um, and certainly there were discussions about going back and looking at the options again. Um, maybe it's not a pipe bridge, maybe it's using the Victoria Street Bridge. I mean, we've looked at all of those other options before, but maybe it's time to go back again.
Is Trail willing to go back again?
Pardon me?
Is Trail concerned about the escalating costs?
Well, their, their side is escalating as well.
Right, and are they willing to go back and redo it?
So, I mean, we didn't come to any resolve there. I just, because, uh, that was just, that was what was put forward, and it was, you know, a fairly sudden thing, that suddenly these numbers are jumping by millions of dollars.
Definitely.
So, yeah, with the change in cost apportionment, City of Roslin's going up fifty six thousand, Warfield's going up thirty three thousand, and Trail is down about ninety thousand. Um, the flow meters are not in the current budget. I've got a copy over there that I gave to Cynthia, and, um, if you can copy that and send it into the info package this week, that would be nice. Um, so the flow meters aren't currently included in the budget. City of Tr, I mean, the regional district staff is talking about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, in order to, um, get those flow meters in. And they are suggesting drawing it from reserves rather than, than taxing for it. Um, but they're also, it, it also seems that they're discussing something much more complex than what had, certainly than what our task force has been talking about. Um, Mr. Holmes on our task force has done a significant work himself and with, with the help of some other engineers that he knows in order to, you know, how do you get flow meters in? And, um, the regional district staff are talking about land cost, um, um, in order to extend outside of the easement and build a vault chamber. I mean, it's a little bit beyond me technically, but I was certainly surprised by the discussion. Um, and anyway, there was a motion put forward, um, to ensure that the regional district staff are, um, making sure that the flow meters put in will record accurately the three different municipalities, as well as the area B.
That's a good question about that. Would it make any sense to have the task? Would it make any sense to have the task force, or the engineers, or whatever, go and make a presentation to the regional district committee and their staff? Because if they've got a better way to do this.
Go ahead.
Well, if they've got a better way to do that, maybe the regional district hasn't thought of it.
I don't know that it's a better way, I think...
A cheaper way might be a better way.
Well, I think, I mean, Ken and Al Fisher, they've put together significant reports that we've passed on. We passed on to...
Sometimes a presentation might, might be helpful. Just a, just an idea.
The other thing we have to remember is it's the regional history, so...
It's our money.
Well, we are the regional district, I mean, you know, we're a...
Anyway, I mean, I don't know, I, if Counselor Wallace, if Counselor Wallace thinks that it's going to make a difference down there, then we can have...
Well, I, I was hoping for...
We were hoping for a meeting anyway.
For another task force meeting, to have me discuss it and see what they think. The next, so the next sewerage meeting, it's usually every two months, but because of what we've got going on, it'll be in February fourth. Yeah, and, and they'll be, they'll be putting together an RFP, looking for specialized expertise in order to figure out where those flow meters should be located, ensuring as much accuracy as possible, consistency between them. So, that's coming. And the regional district staff will be drawing up the service establishment bylaw. So once the SLP is, it'll be converted to that service establishment bylaw. It'll get three readings by the board, probably at this January board meeting. And then it comes to the three municipalities for approval, before being sent to the ministry for approval. And then it has to get back to the board for final adoption before the March thirty-first deadline. So that's where that's going. There was a question, and this, this is a question for council, whether Roslin would support Area B coming in as a full participant to the service, rather than being a contract to the service.
Area B?
Yes.
Yeah, because...
Putting funding everywhere out there, and putting, what are we talking about?
Riverville and Oasis, they, they now, they now are, are, use the service, but they don't have a vote. So the question being asked, now that Trail has three votes?
Well, Trail now has four.
They have four votes, so they can outvote Trail and Warfield all day. So we would like...
No, Roslin and, they can outvote, you said Trail and Warfield.
Well, you know what I meant, so if we bring B in as a, as a full participant, that'd be another vote there, so that Trail can just run amok.
I mean, does, does City of Roslin, do we have any concern with that? I mean, to me, it makes total sense.
No, and the task force said, as well, that it...
It should be a vote.
We need that, because otherwise...
Yeah, so how many, so there's a, a Roslin vote, a Warfield vote, and four Trail votes?
No, it goes weighted, when it goes to the board, then it becomes a weighted vote, and you get one vote for every twenty-five hundred. And Trail's population just went back over seventy-five, so now they're back up to four votes. We have two, Warfield has one.
So we'd have one more with Area B.
So we'd have, this would be a tie game. So it'd be four to four, yeah, yeah. Anyway, for sure, I just wanted to know if there was...
No, good idea.
Any difficulty with that? So far, it hasn't moved past Trail saying no, and I said, why? And they, and he said, just no.
Why are we surprised?
Anyway, and then just for information, the Village of Fruitville changed their rep to the regional district. Larry Gray has been replaced by Mayor Caccini. Sockini, Caccini?
Chikini.
And then, coming up, where am I? East End Services meeting on Wednesday, Policy Executive personnel, and Environmental Services on Thursday. Next week is Finance and the Hospital Board.
Too bad you're not doing anything.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So I'll just, you're done, yeah? So I'll go to committee appointments, just bring this forward, just so everybody knows that. Committee, the whole, is all of council, obviously. Committee is established by bylaw, mayor and appointed representative, so Jill, are you still happy there?
Where?
Sustainability Commission?
Well, you know, to be honest, it's not that I'm not happy, it just, um...
Well, you want to stay there.
Well, it depends on, you know, I'd rather go back to the Commerce and let Counselor Moore do the Sustainability Commission, to be honest.
If that's good with you, then you're in the Sustainability Commission, you can go to Chamber of Commerce.
Great.
How's that, everybody happy with that?
I have a budget I can go and talk to them about.
Heritage Commission, myself, Streetscape, who was on that, I can't remember.
Me.
Who?
Jill.
Oh, Jill, you, you good there?
Well, good, yeah, because we've, like, sleeping for two years, but yeah, sure, I'll do that.
Chamber, we've done.
Well, it was, you know, it was the, you know, Dare and myself, I don't even know, it says two counselors, I don't know who the others, yeah.
We only need one, it says up to, and I think that's the other thing, we, why, we don't really, why do we need two liaisons going to one meeting? And it's kind of silly to me.
Yeah, that's not efficient at all.
Uh, liaison to Tourism Roslin, that, once they remove us as being on the board directors, and I said, make a request for a liaison, because right now, if we show up to a meeting, right, we're, could be construed as being a member of the board. So they promised that they would do that, so I will stay there, once they adjust their bylaws.
Because it says liaison here, and it has for years.
Yeah, well, we changed it, we changed it.
Oh, you did, okay.
It was on their bylaws, they were actually on their bylaws as a director, so they have to change that. Uh, education, I don't know that we have much there happening, I know you were there, and if NOL's gone...
Yeah, I mean...
We can leave that, see what happens.
We can leave that, and leave me in there if you want, unless someone else wants to do it, but I'm, I'm, I'm good with, you know, if something comes up, they need a group.
Museum, one, we're going, down to one, and Thatch will stay there. LCCBD, Counselor Moore, we had a discussion, and I think, did you get a chance to talk to Martin?
You know what, I didn't, I didn't, I meant to, but I didn't.
But we'll leave you there, and then...
Yeah, I mean, the, the conversation that the mayor and I had was that, well, since we're not supporting them, we don't really have a position at that board, so we don't really have a...
But we do support them, we do support them through the regional district, right? We, we did contribute to that function through the regional district.
Right, but not anymore.
Then, no, they have a hundred and forty thousand dollars to help with this.
Well, that's the LCIC, that's the LCIC, which you're...
No, but that's, that's funneled through...
From the LCCDT.
Through the LCCDT.
That's in agreement with the LCCDT.
Yeah, so we, there's still money there that we paid, is the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it's related to this, it's related to their funding, so I sort of had some discussions with Mike Martin. Sat, went down there and talked to them, because he was, he had some questions, so I said I'd come and meet him, so I went and met him. And some of their funding is tied to money that they get from the CBT, right?
Well, that's for the, the two hundred thousand dollars for the grant, that's not, they administer that, that's different, they don't get money there.
But, but they do, they administer it.
To administer that fund, that's it.
But, 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 there's a big but. So what was explained to me was in participating at some level, that that group, that the Columbia Basin Trust's trajectory on income is going up. So in the greater Trail, or lower Columbia, or whatever you want to call that area, that the opportunity for additional economic development type supports are growing. And the discussion between Martin and the CBT folks, looks like there's opportunities, additional opportunities, that funding to grow. And so, um, you know, it's not, it has nothing to do with the appointments, but, but our relationship with them, I guess what I'm saying is we may have been a little hasty, because of what they're saying now. I would suggest maybe that the mayor contact Mr. Martin directly and go sit down and talk to him, I would. I would suggest that, and hear what he has to say on that, maybe, just as a second source, bring it back to council, have some discussion, because this is related to whether we have somebody sitting down there, because we do support them. But, but because of the way that the pots of money work, I guess what I'm saying is that the leverage that they're looking for with the CBT, by having everybody on board in little amounts, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying we maybe need to have a second sobering.
I would support that, I would, I would support that also.
Yeah, I think that's, if we want to bring that back, there's a way we can bring that back, right?
You can bring it back.
It's passed, I think, I think it's passed thirty days.
What does that mean, you had to do it within thirty days?
That's, that's a good procedure. But, um, I've had, I've had discussions with Mr. Martin and myself, and, you know, we fund a lot of groups, and, uh...
Well, I don't disagree, I'm just saying.
Geez, you know, I mean, everybody does a good job, everybody, I mean, everybody, and I say, Mike, yeah, everybody, but where do you...
Well, they were asking for seventeen hundred dollars, and it does go to the, to the overall, to the overall regional group. And CBT, I'm just saying strategically, CBT looks for, they, they like to see everybody on board doing that. The two hundred thousand dollars that they're giving for this community initiative thing, they, there's a separate board...
That's, that's separate to this discussion.
I know it is, but I'm just, I just...
Because we, because we made the, we made the decision, the politicians sat with CBT, and we made the decision to not have politicians on it, I was there.
That's right.
So that's separate to what we're talking.
I know, but I'm, I'm talking about the bigger picture, right? The bigger picture strategically, when we look at CBT, the things they do, not just this community initiatives, but other things they do, they look for those regional cooperation opportunities, right? They look, where do they see communities working together? And we're the only community that, that failed to go forward on this. This particular, the LCCDT, got a big push at the, at that, remember that economic thing we went to? The three of us were there, do you remember, in Castle Guard? And they were being held up as an, as a, you know, a model, you know, all this stuff, well, we...
People talking, people talking, what happened, what happened?
I know, I know.
Well, actually, the CBT also likes to support initiatives that local government does not. And personally, I think that local government should not be using taxed dollars in order to promote economic development. And maybe if local government takes a real strong stand and says, no, that's not our job to support economic development, then maybe the CBT will jump in and do it for us.
Right, so anyway, I, I take that, all of that, under advisement, but it's absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about.
But, you know, can I, can I put in one, did you comment?
Huh? Oh, I, I thought you had a rebuttal, no, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that I, and I'm not going to mention any names, but I've been having a couple of conversations in the community and got hammered, not about that particular one, but, but hammered personally, about how are you building relationships, regional relationships, right? And it was a pretty big conversation, and it doesn't matter who it was with, but it was, I was going, okay, can only do so much. First, I said, well, we do have a regional director that represents us down there, and, you know, there are people on the board, the LCCDT, but, you know, it's kind of that, and, you know, it's always been a strategic, you know, goal for us to build regional relationships, and, and better that kind of whole sense of, yeah, getting along thing, but sometimes, you know, it just, it just doesn't happen, and I, I mean, that's the, I, I believe, you know, you, you know, a whole bunch of people here have done that or tried to do that, and so when I was getting hammered personally, I was going, okay, there's only so much I can do, right? I'm in committees, I work hard for the city, but...
I mean, I think, I think the new sewer thing just shows some cooperation there, I think that's positive.
Yeah.
I think certainly, I think any counselor, but certainly I go, I go to Caccini, all of them. We have very similar things, but when you say, how are you building relationships, or are you building it, but do you mean, how do we spend money on these relationships, or how are we saving money? What is, what is, what is building, what does building relationships mean?
Yeah, well, that was part of the conversation, right?
I mean, you know, well...
You want me to go down and shake everybody's hand there, I, you know, my example was, well, should have been at the AKBLG and seen what the Trail Council looked like, I mean, you've got to, you've got to build relationships with someone that you can build a relationship with.
Okay, so...
Anyway, it's just kind of in that whole regional conversation.
I haven't been hammered by that one lately, so, huh? Yeah, I know, I, we, we went, uh, so, the LCI, LCA, and the LCCDT, you're good there. Safety Advisory Committee, that's you, isn't it, Trace?
Me.
Or Lee, or whomever?
No, that means the councilman.
Oh, emergency planning, I think that was me.
Have we ever had anybody?
Yeah, no, it was me, that was me. Uh, Interior Health, Counselor Wallace, you can stay there, because it's all part of the RDKV, and you can stay on the RDKV, right? As we've had this discussion, unless you want to resign, and no...
I'm good.
You're good, okay. So that's the appointments, everybody happy?
Who did you put on Tourism Roslin, oh, you are, you're going to do the liaison, yeah.
Once they ask, and then, then, I said, they're, they're clear on that, so, okay?
Joey, could you get me the chamber meeting, or who's, I haven't been there for a while. No, I, well, you were the, we were the last liaison.
I'll get it.
I'm talking to you as the council, you were the last liaison, I'm talking about your little job at the chamber. You'll get the dates, or someone...
You'll get the date.
Get, someone get me the information about the chamber meeting, please.
Greg, will you be the first to go to SC, and then I'll go if you don't go, or we have, okay? So you'll let me know when you don't go?
Yep.
No, you're not the liaison?
Well, instead of me.
Oh, yeah, there's two of us, no, there's two of us.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because it says two, I, I still think that it's silly, but anyway, that's fine.
Okay, you know what, I think I was thinking because they're no longer, okay.
Anyway, just leave it there.
That's fine.
So we'll see you Wednesday. Um, yeah, so that's good, so now I need a motion to proceed to, in cameras...